Good morning and buenas, half a day to everyone. Good morning to those who are here with us this morning and to those who might be watching this proceeding at home. This public hearing is called in order and the time is now 9:04 in the morning. For the record, today is Friday, May 9, 2025. This hearing will be conducted by myself, Senator Shelley B. Calvo, Chairwoman of the Committee on Child Welfare, Youth Affairs, Senior Citizens, Women Affairs, Disability Services, the Arts, Culture, Historic Preservation and the Gania Restoration. To comply with the open government law, notice for this hearing was disseminated via email to all senators and local media outlets on Friday, May 2, 2025, and the second notice on Wednesday, May 7, 2025. Notice of this hearing was also posted and available on the Guam Legislature's website and the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal. I would like to welcome my colleagues who are joining me this morning, my Vice Chair for my committees, Vice Speaker Anthony Ada. Good morning, sir. And of course, my colleague, Senator Sean Gumatautau. Good morning, sir. Senator Sean was here before me. Thank you, sir. We have six items on our agenda this morning, and that is two appointments and four bills. We'll first begin with the two appointments and take a short recess and come back for the four bills. Before we proceed with our discussions, I would like to set some rules of engagement for everyone participating in this proceeding to follow. Rules of engagement: When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and state your name for the record and your title for record-keeping purposes. Panel members are asked to remain in the room for questions and for additional testimony as may be desired by members of the committee and the senators that are present. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal infringement as to the character or motive of any senator or any individuals testifying is not permitted. Individuals who fail to abide by these rules will be restricted from participating and will be escorted and removed from the room. Before we begin your testimonies, I would like to give my opening remarks as the committee chairperson. The Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, GHBRB, is a five-member body with five alternates established to oversee and guide historic preservation's efforts across the island. Appointed by the governor with the advice and consent of the legislature, the board is composed of professionals in the field of history, archaeology, and architecture, with at least one member possessing knowledge of traditional Chamorro society and culture. The board is responsible for entering properties into the Guam Register of Historic Places, evaluating nominations to the National Register of Historic Places, reviewing the Guam Historic Property Survey, and assessing the content of the island's comprehensive preservation plan. It also serves as the Board of Directors of the Guam Preservation Trust Fund and accesses State Historic Review Board under the Federal National Historic Preservation Act. At this time, I would like to call upon the individuals who signed up for oral testimony to testify. Please come forward and occupy the panel. We're going to start with testimonies from other individuals prior to the testimony of the appointees. Sir, I'm going to start, Father Pale Eric.
Sisus Masie, buenas dias, senadoras and senadores. My name, for the record, is Pale Eric Forbes. I'm a current member of the Guam Historical Preservation Review Board, and I come in support of the nomination of Nicole Calvo to the same board. You have my written testimony, which was written in anticipation of the earlier date of this hearing which was postponed, so I won't bother to reiterate everything in that written testimony, but just to stress that I've known Nicole for about 15 years in a professional way, since she was also a member of the board in the past and also an employee of the Guam Preservation Trust. And she is now Development Director and in charge of special projects at the Pacific Historic Parks Agency, which is federal. So her appointment to fill in the slot for the position of planning on the board is very appropriate because she has a lot of experience with local government level, federal government level, and nonprofit level agencies. But just to stress my own personal interaction with Nicole in the realm of historic preservation, she has kept me busy. I always tell her that the moment I start to say, "Okay, I can breathe a sigh of relief", I get an email or a message from Nicole, "We got another project." And just to highlight some of those projects, which I thoroughly enjoyed and thanks to Nicole was able to be involved in, we have done, and by "we" I mean all the other good people at the Pacific Historic Parks, we've done videoed interviews of World War II survivors, which have become available to the public. The last one we did was Senor Danny Santos, whose memories of Maningun we were able to document. We have done virtual reality videos so that people can put these, you know, the latest technology on their eyes and block out everything else and be at the Plaza de España on December 10, when the Japanese came in. She has gotten me to write articles for the Pacific Historic Parks Magazine Remembrance, which comes out of Hawaii, but we always try and get Guam in there somehow, so I've written about three or four articles. And she's gotten me to do online, at least two or three online Zoom presentations on war topics. So she's never had a loss for another project. She usually is very successful in finding funds for it. So there's no doubt that Nicole has the competence, but also the passion for historic preservation. And just on a personal note, she authored a book, The Ragdoll and the Marine, documenting her mother's war experience. So it's very personal to Nicole, it's from her heart, and this passion for historic preservation. Sisus Masie.
Sisus Masie, Pale Eric, and so, so nice to see you here today. Before we begin, I just wanted to, or we continue, I just wanted to put it out there that if you are testifying for both Nicole and Marvin, you can do so and just go ahead and read both your testimonies. Thank you. Sir, Mr. Joe.
Buenas, good morning, senators. For the record, my name is Joe Kinata. I'm the Chief Program Officer of the Guam Preservation Trust. And I'm so glad that Pale Eric went before me because I echo everything that he said. But I'm here to testify in favor of both Nicole Calvo and Marvin Aguilar. Of course, Nicole was an employee of the Guam Preservation Trust, and we had so much fun with her, but then she had to move on to greater pastures. Later, she became a board member, and equally, we have fun with her. Basically, really, just the fun of her, her passion and her dedication to our heritage. Marvin Aguilar, we've, we've not worked with him in, in that capacity with Guam Preservation Trust, but Marvin brings to the board a vast experience. You know, at one point, he was the chief planner for the territory under the Department of Land Management. He's been involved with federal programs and grants, and, and it's the type of experience, the type of knowledge that we need at the board level. We are in support of, of Marvin Aguilar. We had sent our testimony, just like Pale Eric did earlier, and you have a copy of that in your, in your docket. Sisus Masie.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. Go ahead, Mr.
Buenos dias, Senadora Calvo, Senador Presidente Ada, Senador Gumatautau, Guajuyu C. Carlos Madrid, Profesor, Universidad Guajuan. I'm here to provide oral testimony in support of Ms. Nicole Calvo for the Board of Directors of Guam Preservation Trust. I have known professionally Nicole for a number of years and have personally witnessed her devotion for work, her professionalism, and her, as has been mentioned before, her proactive role in any task that she undertakes. She has the balance between caring for historic preservation, for history, for the past, and at the same time, the institutional knowledge with federal institutions, with the government of Guam, and making her an asset. I would say that the Guam Preservation Trust is privileged to, to have her. Any agency would be privileged to have her serving in such a position. So I wholeheartedly endorse her, her appointment.
Thank you, senor. Half a day, sir.
Half a day, Senator Calvo, and half a day, Senator Ada, and half a day, Senator Gumatautau. Dankuluna sijus masi, ni asina oportunidad igai yon noyam guini ni para ben sangen pu siniko zaman motram guini para ben suporti siniko. I have a written testimony, and if I may start with it. My name is William M. Paulino, and I'm better known as, you know, with us schoolchildren as Mr. Bill. They did not call me with my last name, Mr. Bill. And I hereby provide the 38th Guam Legislature, respectively the Office of the People, Senator Shelley V. Calvo, a letter of recommendation and testimony for the appointee Ms. Nicole A. Calvo to the position of Member to the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. Initially, I got to know Nicole Calvo at St. Francis School here in Guam in 1993. During this year, she was a teacher, and I was also a teacher, and later, we became administrators of the school in 2001. Beyond the scope of teaching and learning, she served also as a member and committee leader for the accreditation team of the school. Her ability to understand and synthesize criteria, clarify each criterion, organize information, and respond to the questions for total assessment in teaching and learning, she had tremendously enabled the school to be fully accredited for five years with the Accrediting Commission for Schools and Colleges, known in acronym as WASC. One of the most notable character of Nicole, working with her as a teacher and as administrators, was her dedication, integrity, and respect for all persons. It didn't matter whether you're white, brown, or black, it didn't matter to Nicole. She sees everybody as a human being, and that was my greatest admiration for her. This type of character helped the faculty and the staff members of the school to work harmoniously in accomplishing the task of teaching and learning for all students. Nicole worked diligently with students to use their gifts and talents to the fullest extent possible in their learning development. This also became the impetus for the faculty and the staff to even strive harder to, harder, no matter what the situation may be. She was always a goal-setting employee and ensured that the mission and the vision of the school was carried out as much as possible by using resources necessary to accomplish them. And you know, I remember going back in 1993, St. Francis School did not have much, but you know that humanness in Nicole that I saw, she had so much to give with those schoolchildren that even in our, you know, the accomplishment in terms of the student achievement, we were beating the national percentile for those students. But you see, that was something that really mattered in terms of this individual that I, I knew at that time, and so I was very impressed with her. She was also a very goal-setting employee and ensured that the mission and the vision of the school were carried out as much as possible, and I think I mentioned that over, you know, in terms of using the resources available. I saw this character in her job also with Pacific Historic Parks. My wife and I were invited by her to participate in the needs assessment being conducted by Pacific Historic Parks. She provided the kind of environment that made me and my wife and other participants to participate and feel safe to express, express our views. The needs assessment included a number of senior citizens of the island, and that was something that I really had, I had really high admiration for Nicole, her love for the senior citizens. And usually, right now, you know, even my voice, I'm losing my voice as, as a senior citizen, you know, for this island, but you know, with Nicole, I felt very safe with her, and that was something that I really appreciated by, with her. We observed that the seniors felt very much at home because of her leadership that Nicole and other staff members demonstrated through all the two meetings. Several days after the meeting, Nicole made the effort to call the participants on the phone to thank them again, and if they had anything else to share. With her leadership and dedication in accomplishing this goal, the participants were invited again to the reading and the explanation of the final analysis of the findings of the project. A copy of this report was given to each participant, which I really, personally, I really appreciated that, and so was my wife. We were very pleased with the extra step that Nicole had undertaken. Most of the time, you know, people get invited, and then they were just left out in the dark, they didn't know what was going on, and it was, you know, right after coming together, nothing after that. But with this character, with this individual, she made sure that everybody was notified of the result, and so that was something that I thought was really a neat idea. We were not left in the dark because they, I mean, we were not left in the dark because they had no idea what the final outcome was. Not Nicole, her respect and love for all people makes a difference in the way we see each other in this world. Nicole's great leadership, intellectual, and respectful character, both were demonstrated in the world of work and in all walks of life, have made goals and objectives much easier to accomplish, and I saw this in Nicole over the years that I knew her, and also knowing the family, I saw this also. I know recently, not too long ago, rather, I was invited to a party, and wow, she was there standing, making sure that everything was okay, was taken care of. That was really neat. Knowing Nicole with a such character, I truly believe that she would be an exemplary board member to the Guam Historic Review Board. Dankuluna sijus masi, and should you have any question, I have my numbers on my oral testimony, or rather, my written testimony. Dankuluna sijus masi.
Thank you, sir. Sisus masi to your testimonies, Pale Eric, Mr. Kinata, Mr. Madrid, and Mr. Paulino. Thank you so much. Before I proceed, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my other colleague, Senator Taylor Titegui. And I'd like to, to now go ahead and proceed to the testimonies of the appointees, and I would like to start, begin with Ms. Nicole Calvo. Ms. Nicole Calvo, by the way, is a member, Planning Representative, Guam Historic Preservation Review Board. This is for a term limit of four years from date of confirmation.
Manana sijus, Senator Calvo, Senator Ada, Senator Gumatautau, and Senator Titegui, and to the other members of the 38th Guam Legislature, and of course, our esteemed guest here this morning, Guahu Siniko Calvo. Hagan netavidat nati costru Calvo, zen defunto Felix V. Artero Calvo Jr. Dispensa zu, sakalan aplink commentus giffinetsomoru. So for the sake of not being misunderstood, I will regrettably continue in English. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today as a nominee for the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board and the Guam Preservation Trust. It is a great honor to be considered for a role that carries such an important responsibility, the protection and preservation of our island's rich cultural and historical heritage. I am here before you, a Chamorro woman, with a deep sense of duty to ensure that the stories, places, and traditions that define our Chamorro identity and Guam's diverse history are safeguarded for future generations. Our island is home to a wealth of cultural assets, from our ancient Lati sites to Spanish era structures, war-time landmarks, and the many artifacts that tell the story of our resilience and our evolution. As Guam continues to grow and develop, it is imperative that we balance progress with preservation, ensuring that our history is not lost, but celebrated and integrated into our future. I bring to this role over 20 years of my life's work, in which I have been actively engaged in the preservation and promotion of Chamorro history, culture, and language. This journey has taken many forms, from working with Master of Chamorro Dance, Saina Frank Ribon, and the Fafat Nagui and cultural practitioners at Pa' Tautautano, now Pára Iper Betzuni Tautauta, to my work at the Guam Preservation Trust, where I worked as a Special Projects Coordinator, supporting initiatives that required collaborative planning for preservation projects, including coordinating the development of the first Pacific Heritage Youth Summit and coordinating the Historic Structures Report for FQ Sanchez Elementary School in Humatec. These experiences deepen my understanding of how planning, preservation, and public service intersect, which I carried with me to the Guam Museum, where I had the privilege of serving as the museum administrator under the Calvo administration and assisting with the opening of our permanent exhibit, a milestone for our community. Today, I continue this work through Pacific Historic Parks, where I work to ensure that the lived experiences of our World War II survivors are remembered, documented, honored, and understood. And building on this commitment to preservation, I recently secured a grant to lead a community-driven needs assessment across the Mariana Islands that brought together a wide range of voices from our manumco, our educators, students, business leaders, and government officials to collectively identify priorities in historical and cultural preservation in Tinian Luta Saipan Zen Guam. My passion for this work is rooted in a belief that preservation is not just about protecting the past. It is about actively engaging our people in a shared responsibility to educate, empower, and steward our cultural heritage for future generations. And I believe that collaboration with local stakeholders, government officials, and cultural organizations is key to ensuring that our preservation efforts are meaningful, effective, and inclusive. If confirmed, I will work diligently to uphold the missions of both the Guam State Historic Preservation Office and the Guam Preservation Trust. I will advocate for responsible preservation policies, promote community engagement, and support initiatives that protect the tangible and intangible heritage that makes Guam unique. I appreciate the trust that has been placed in me, and I look forward to working alongside my fellow board members, the staff of these two organizations, stakeholders, and the people of Guam to safeguard our island's history. Thank you for your consideration, and I welcome any questions that you may have. Sisus masi.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony, Ms. Nicole A. Calvo. And now, we proceed to Mr. Marvin Q. Aguilar. This is for Member Planning Alternate Representative for Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, term limit four years from date of confirmation. You're recognized, Mr. Aguilar.
Thank you, and like, if I may, like, Mr. Kinata, I, I think she says everything. Firstly, I would like to thank Madam Chair and the committee members for hosting this hearing. I am humbled and honored to have been nominated to be a board member of the Guam Preservation Trust. As humble a person as he is, I would like to also extend my gratitude to Mr. Michael McHale for being the first to spark my interest in serving as a member, and of course, to Mr. Joseph Kinata for his passion and commitment to ensuring the charge of this board continues to preserve the precious historic resources that are unique to, to the island and its community. I would like to thank my beautiful wife behind me, Marina, my wife of 31 years, who sits behind me in support of this nomination. My name is Marvin Aguilar. I was born and raised in Guam, well, raised in God's country, in the village of Talafofo. I am a Kalero Karabao through my grandfather, Jesus Terlahi Kitugua, and I'm of the Monoc Clan through my grandmother, Antonia Garidu Kitugua. At the age of 11, my family moved to the village of Deerido, where I lived until I got married in 1993, and from there, I was kidnapped by my wife to the village of Mongilo. For over 30 years, there I built a home, raised my three children, Brylin, Glenn Vincent, and Mia Therese. I have Mia Therese behind me, she's taken some time from work to, to also show her support. I apologize, this is short. I am a career land use planner, and after retiring from the, from public service of 34 years, I now continue in the private industry. My work experience spans over two decades, working with small property owners, from working with small property owners to assessing and working with large and complex development projects. Of the five disciplines structured around the trust, show, trust, excuse me, I have the opportunity to share my experience with the trust and to support the advancement of its goals and objectives to preserve and protect Guam's historic sites, culture, and perspectives for the benefit of our people and our future. Again, Madam Chair and committee members, thank you for this opportunity.
Sisus masi to, for your testimony, and thank you to both of you, Ms. Nicole and Mr. Marvin, and congratulations on your appointment and good luck. At this point, I would like to recognize my colleagues for questions, for any questions or remarks that they might have for the panel. Colleagues, please be mindful of the five minutes allotted to you for discussion and questions for the current agenda item. Before I move forward, I'd like to recognize my colleague, Senator Theresa Lahey. Before I move forward, I'd like to recognize my colleague, Senator Theresa Lahey. And again, Senator Telo. You know, they say the early bird gets the worm, right? So the prize for the first question goes to Senator Sean Gumatautau. Sir, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I really just, being late drives me crazy, so I just want to say that for the record. First off, I'll go ahead and begin with Nicole and, man, stepping up and serving, it's, in these times, this is kudos to you for wanting to do that. And also to Mr. Marvin, again, why serve today? I think people behind you are probably, this has got to be one of the biggest reasons why, is that you have a good support system of people who really probably push you hard. And I'm sure you've got other things to do, but I'm sure this is a really important experience. I'm going to ask, there's just only a handful of questions, but, and I'll ask of each of you and just to get your perspective. Can I, and I'll start with Nicole first. What do you think is the most important priority of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board today?
I think for today, in our modern time here, is to make sure that the sites and, Senator, may I, I'm referring to the needs assessment that I conducted recently, our organization conducted, and from the people, from the community, it was the need to maintain our historic sites. I mean, that was, that came out loud and clear. The constant maintenance of historic sites across the islands of the Marianas was important. But also, what came out of this needs assessment is that we needed to educate, but education wasn't just in the schools, it was in the community, so that people, our island people can understand our history and why these historic sites are important. I think this is perhaps one of the things that I'm going to make sure that we also continue to do, to maintain and to uphold. Thank you.
What do you believe is the most important priority from your perspective of the board?
It really is a, my point of view is protecting our heritage, protecting our culture, making, finding ways to continue teaching our young generations of what our history is. Once we lose that, we lose everything, we lose our self-identity. The trust serves that purpose, because you can read text, historical text, but to go into an area that has historical significance, it brings you closer to what actually happened, what that history was, okay? You touch and you feel it, you see it, and it brings you to a greater perspective of that history.
Thank you so much. And I'll ask, my next question is, we're all seeing that there are very limited local funds today, and we're starting to see a lot more declining federal resources to support our historic programs across, not just Guam, but across the country. Can you share with us today maybe a few suggestions, maybe, if you will, to how we will execute the work that's needed across those important historic agencies to protect all of our historic places on Guam?
Senator, currently, I've been involved, I've been asked to sit on many different collaborative groups, and as a collective, these nonprofit organizations in humanities and history have been gathering because we are small and the funding is very sparse. But with what resources each of us can bring to the table as a collective, we can do that with great strength. So what Pacific Historic Parks can bring as a nonprofit organization that I work with, what the Guam Preservation Trust can bring, what Humanities Guamhan can bring, what Historic Hagatya, the Hagatya Development Redevelopment Authority can bring, I think if we work together and like I said, bring the resources that we have together to help each other, push forward these agendas, we can do it. Money is scarce, it's very scarce throughout the island and of course, our nation, but it shouldn't stop us. Money should not stop us. And I think there's a lot of passion in the room, and with these passionate people that are with us, I think it can be done, it might be done in a slower method and a slower manner, but it could still be done. So I feel like working collaboratively will be an answer for us right now.
I totally agree with Nicole. I think, I think one of the biggest challenges we have is that the narrative is looking for money to support this endeavor, and perhaps maybe that is not the way to approach it, but actually a collaborative effort to work with other different folks who are, with entities who share commonalities, you know, and objectives and goals. So perhaps maybe that's the direction we should be taking or focusing on more. The other thing is, with respect to money, there are sources of financing, you know, that's available to here, and it may not be politically correct to some people's eyes, but you have many interested development folks, you know, wanting to come into the island. We can attach ourselves to that. I leave that up to the senators to handle that, but, I mean, when you're looking for money, you source out where the money's at, right? But again, getting back to what Nicole said, you know, collaborative efforts with those with like minds is the best way to go, to drive that one voice so that we can make it, we can achieve these goals.
All right, thank you so much for that. How can the work of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board contribute to efforts to complement this Guam experience that we're hearing a lot about, that we're trying to drive our number one industry in tourism?
I think the, I'm a part of that commission as well with Joe Kenata and speaking, with the speaker, working together for this Guam experience. The Historic Preservation, the Historic Preservation Office has a huge part to play, because if we talk about not, we're trying to make the Guam experience the experience for our people. And if our experience is a great one, it will be great for our visitors. And part of that is working with the historic sites and structures that we have to ensure, like I had mentioned, that they are maintained, but also to bring about an educative piece, an interpretive piece for our people to understand, so we can work with the state, the State Historic Review Office to make sure that these sites are cleaned, maintained, cared for, and then getting, like I mentioned, our other nonprofits to do interpretive educational pieces for our people. I think that will uplift our Guam experience.
The only thing I could think of to your question is that the trust brings the right information so that we can develop the, that interpretation. A lot of times, unfortunately, and lack of a better term, outside influences brings their interpretation of what our culture is, what our heritage is, and sometimes that could get a little convoluted. The trust, we have historians, we have archaeologists who delve into the factual, you know, substance of our, of our, of our history, and that's what they bring to the table.
I'm just going to sneak in one more question, Madam Chair, and this is, and I've been mentioning it in many of the public hearings since I've been a member of this legislature, but we're, you know, we keep, maybe we're looking at things differently, but we have a lot of great facilities on Guam that have now are in that realm of the over 50 years old. I mean, I was, had the privilege to work with the trust in helping along the first push of the historic courthouse. And then I brought it up here that our, we have a public health center in Mingila that is, I think, the same age. But we got to start looking at not knocking down buildings across the government, but how do we protect those facilities? I know that they might be old, but they got good bones, and I'm wondering, could you, your efforts maybe start to protect some of these buildings that really should be honored versus totally demolished?
Senator, from what I know about historic preservation and getting things on the National Registry for Historic Preservation, I know there's caveats, and there are thresholds and points for each of these facilities to have in order for them to be considered part of the National Registry. So it would be great to look, be looking at buildings that are 50-plus years old now in, within our inventory here in the island, and then probably doing a study as to of the buildings that are historic because of the threshold of the age, but looking at the other points that need to be addressed as well, and taking a look at that, and we could do that as board members of the Guam Preservation Trust, with the help of the staff of the trust to try to put some, something together, and then bringing it forward and seeing whether some of these buildings and some of these structures can fall under the Guam Registry or the National Registry for Historic Places.
In today's economy, the cost of building materials, manpower, reuse is actually, you know, the approach, and we really do have to look at these, these buildings so that we can reuse them and perhaps save some pennies for the government of Guam, right? But more importantly, identifying these historic, the historical sites, which is the goal of the trust, and I apologize if I mumble because I think of, you know, my brain just kind of thinks about different things, but, you know, focusing on these, these historic homes in Alahan, expanding on Lake Geppago, some of the properties in Mingila, there are some World War II sites that really needs to be improved on, not because they'd be nice-looking parks, but when a tourist goes there, they say, this is what happened there, and it brings them to that place, so that we don't have another world war, right? That's that one person or one family that's going to say, this was, that's what we have to focus on. I hope I can answer your question, sir, because we're looking at two different things. We're using certain government facilities, but looking at private properties and looking at government facilities that can be enhanced. When the old legislature was demolished and it opened up this huge park from the, the old GPD building, I don't know what we call it anymore, switch, all the way up to the Pasay de Sashana, you could, you could see this area and its grandeur, and we can focus on that, you know, on historical sites like that, we can make this island a, you know, we can increase, elevate the interest of folks visiting our island. One of the things I wanted to say is, you know, we, we go off, and I may be going off skew here, but, you know, we go off island and we go to cities, and we see their malls and we see their highways, and Guam is unique. You know, we do have malls, we have highways, but we also have places here that, that is unique to us, that tells a story about who we are, right? And it's, I wouldn't say right, but, and I can only say it's unique, and we have to focus on these, these areas, okay, to impress upon Guam as a people, Guam as an individual people.
Well, thank you for your, your answers and your, I think that I was hoping to elicit that response, so that other members of this body, as we deliberate different parts of policy, that we are not forgetting that there's some really good facilities that still remain and provide that important value to our community. And I do look forward to getting your nominations on the floor and voting in the affirmative for, for both of your nominations. So again, congratulations and thank you for stepping forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Gumatautau. And now, I'd like to recognize Senator Telo Taitegui.
Are you sure you, I'm kind of late?
No.
And Senator Ada was here before me, but I was listening online on my way here at a funeral to go to in the morning, and then there's a trick of the trade to listen to YouTube and double time the, the speed, so I caught up. I was glad I was able to listen to Father Forbes' comments about you, Nicole. Having him here to testify in your favor speaks highly about you, but I've known you for decades and the kind of work that you do, and not just on a personal, your own personal level, but, you know, what you've done to the community speaks highly of you. Thank you so much for stepping up to the plate. And Marvin, I've known you for a couple decades too as well, Department of Land Management, working there, and this is a perfect fit, because a lot of the properties that are held in trust, you know, deal with land and surveying and finding the right guidelines, especially you know the law when it comes to what you can and cannot do. So this is a great fit, okay? And no doubt, however, you know, I appreciated, one of the things that was brought up that you mentioned, Nicole, with regards to, you know, the challenges with funding, and one of the things you mentioned is working collaboratively with other agencies to ensure that there's, you know, no overlap, no waste, and, I mean, the sky's falling down today, but, you know, I think it's just to reorganize and to look at what wastes there are, redundancies, lapses that people are doing, and, you know, one of the biggest issues is people stepping on each other's toes, and just to recalibrate everything, to make it work, especially financially because of these times. But I'm pretty sure these grants will come back once they have seen the waste and adjust to that and move forward. So it's ironic, because the last few days, I've been looking at Guam Preservation Trust. I looked at their website thoroughly, and then I was looking at Komishon as well, and trying to find a way that we can maybe merge these two entities together and help each other out, so there is no lapses. They follow the same perspective. It's preserving our culture, our language, it's preserving our Chamoral heritage that both entities oversee. So that's something I'm glad you mentioned, Nicole, the collaborativeness, and maybe you can reach out to your other board members at looking at something like this. So I appreciate that fully. And one of my biggest things when I ask those who are coming in front, you know, if they have a conflict of interest, have you ever been in a situation where you had to recuse yourself because of a conflict of interest, and are you willing to do that if the time comes?
Senator, I am the first one, if there is a conflict of interest, to step out. I've always acknowledged that. I, I have not had one, thankfully, and thank God I haven't, but if the time comes, and when the time comes and there is a conflict, I will recuse myself from, from voting.
Thank you. Marvin?
Likewise, I actually experienced a conflict in interest in my career and in involved families, so yes, definitely, I would recuse myself.
Okay, everybody's heard that, it's on the record. The other thing is that I look at too is the websites. I ask all the, those who are coming forward to sit on boards and commissions to make sure the website is up to date, because it's so important for transparency, you know, and as I was looking at both the Komishon as well as the Hagatya Preservation Trust, one thing I noticed is that the board minutes, the last inclusion onto the website was May 8, 2024, was the last time anything was placed on, on the website for meetings. I always ask them to make sure you read the board meetings before you decide to make that jump, to find out what's going on, to school yourself, but, you know, Nicole, Marvin, please, you know, ensure that transparency is there, as you sit in this position, that all the information is on the website so that we can look through it.
Senator, I just want to say, just this week, talk about websites. Pacific Historic Parks has been getting a billing that belongs to the Guam State Historic Preservation Office for their website domain. So I went with one of my coworkers, Ms. Ina Fleming, and we drove up to Ganya Heights, and we went into the office and we said, look, this is your billing, you need to pay it, because your website's going to go down if you do, if you don't. So yes, websites are very important, that they're up to date, so everyone can look at them and figure out what's happening. I agree with you in that.
Thank you. Marvin, I, you know, I know you, you're a stickler for our rules and regs, so please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, make sure that's done, as well as...
Open government law like the back of my hand, yes.
Okay. You know, as well as providing information on your website that's not required by law. I think the people of Guam and trust, the, the trust, to put... by law. I think the people of Guam and trust, the, the trust, to put that information out. Right now, it's currently showing that there's close to $15 million that the Guam Preservation Trust has, both in finances as well as assets. And many of that funding is, is placed into like TCDs or, or investment grade accounts. Quite a bit of money is in there. And we know that the cost to, you know, for buildings or resurrecting old buildings, it's costly. Construction costs have gone up, but it's a very healthy, very healthy preservation trust at this time. So collaboration, Nicole, you know, bringing in those other entities that may overlap is, is going to help. And, and the time is now. Last one I have is, yeah, the overlap.
Senator Telo, I'm just going to remind about five minutes, but I'm going to go-
Oh, it's already time. I can go on and on. But lastly, my door is open. So please, it's always open. If you have any concerns, any questions, or something you feel that is not, you know, right, and you, you feel compelled not to, you know, go to someone else other than, you know, in confidence, I'm here. You know, we're looking forward to working with you and thank you so much for stepping up to the plate. Thank you, Madam Chair, for that little extra time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Telo. Normandy, I would go give my colleagues beyond five minutes, but because we have four more bills to hear today, I, I just wanted to budget our time. But then again, I would like to move forward and recognize Senator Therese Terlahi this time.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. Thank you for stepping up to want to serve in this position and especially you with your skills and our knowledge that I think will really complement the board in the work that they're doing in their mission. So I have no doubt that when it comes to the creativity and prioritizing projects for the Guam Preservation Trust, that, you know, your input is going to be very good and based especially on your experience. And my concern just remains that the, this board is also the Historic Preservation Review Board, right? And I'm so glad, Nicole, that you, you talked about the Shippo's Office, the State Historic Preservation Office. For me, that's really where we really need to shore up the link or the support because the Shippo's doing some work and the GPT's doing some work, but as a review board, it's really the review board that's supposed to prioritize what, what the conditions are going to be for. We know the Shippo reviews projects, construction projects and makes those hard decisions, whether things are going to be preserved in place or we're going to allow them to be mitigated by being moved, data collection, they call it, pretty much removed, right? Or changed or, or moved. And that I really feel like the board, well, according to the statute, it says they shall develop the criteria for resolution of any controversial finding in accordance with the administrative adjudication law. And I think it's time to review those again because I think there's just so much pressure on the State Historic Preservation Officer to conclude that moving these pre-Lati or Lati sites or, or findings are necessary because a project is necessary. And I really feel like we just need to help counter that pressure, right? I, so I wanted to ask you, in that role, are you, you know, so the, and the GPT has this unique, unique in the government. They are dedicated building fees, right? A percentage of building fees. Komishon does not have that luxury, the museum, no. Department of Chamorro Affairs, no. The Shippo, no, right? So this is very unique and I just, the priorities that it chooses to use it on is, you know, it's kind of like we are very much relying on, on your judgment in that. Are you familiar with the National Historic Preservation Act? I think, Nicole, you must be because of your work. And, but to me, the two parts of it is the public involvement and public access. Those are the things I think we really need to prioritize because no one else can do that for us. So I'm hoping on the board that you will be our voices, you know, for the people of Guam, where right now it's kind of quiet, right? Not only do we not hear the, no, don't disturb that area, we're not even hearing what is in that area. And I really feel like that's really the big part that we can spend a little bit more money on. For example, Elik, we, we come from Jotunia. When they made findings down there, the only reason I know what, a little bit of what they found when they were building the road, they did archaeology is because I talked to the archaeologists myself. But I really believe if all the people of Jotunia knew what was found there, how unique it was, how unique that area is, they would be so proud. And it's especially important for the young people. So I'm really hoping you're going to share that perspective and find a creative way to do this, to link this up, to take all the findings from the archaeologists and, and put them out there in, in ways that are really going to hit, you know, who we want to know. We want, of course, our tourists to know. We want our visitors to know, but we want our people to know. They are the ones who need to know and they need to know now. They need to know before it's destroyed, hopefully, so that they can decide whether they want to fight to keep that in place. And I, I'm hoping you're going to also help us fight to keep these things in place. The time is very short. Do you agree with the current priorities of the Guam Preservation Trust? What are your priorities in, in the different aspects that they get to look at? And do you agree that you will be able to take this role as the, on the Preservation Review, Historic Preservation Review Board, very serious like that, like where, change it up a little bit, make it more vocal if you need to?
Senator Terlahi, I, I did sit on the board prior and you were the chairwoman at the time when I sat on the board. And for the short time that I sat on the board, I never once met. We were never called by the Guam State Historic Preservation Board to meet, unfortunately. Of course, I sat on the board for maybe less than 15 months and then my term ended. But that is exactly what I want to do. I want to ensure that we're meeting with the Guam State Historic Preservation Board, not just the Guam Preservation Trust, who does a darn good job of having our board members have meetings. I mean, Joe is so on it that he's been begging all of you to make sure that you have people like Marvin and I step up to the plate. And so we're here for that. But I hear what you're saying and I know, I feel the same way. When we take our, our remains, you know, from our ancestors and they're sitting in storage facilities at the Guam Museum or other places, at the DNA Building, and I've been familiar with this, it bothers me greatly and deeply. So yes, Senator, I will make sure that we start to meet and start to talk with Patrick Luhon and, and discuss what's happening. But as far as the Guam Preservation Trust is concerned, as far as their mandates, I really believe in those mandates as well. Everything you're talking about, about informing the people again in the needs assessment was addressed by the people. The people have to be informed. They have to, they have to be heard. And I really know that working with the village mayor is, is always important. So getting that information to our, our residents is, is important for me as well. So yes, I will do that.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Aguilar.
I totally agree as well. And I think when, when it comes to, as I said, when it comes to the information that needs to get out to the public, the more information you put out there, the more you can, the more they can understand what's going on. You mentioned Elik. Elik is, the Elik discovery is extensive. I didn't know how extensive it was, to the point where I can hesitate to drive over the bridge. So yes, I agree. Yeah. Cohesiveness is the operative word between these two entities so that we can achieve, again, our goals and objectives.
Thank you very much. And urgency, please, because-
An urgency.
It doesn't need to be perfect to get that out there, but I think it should get out there urgently. Sisus Massey, thank you again for your work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Terlahi. And now I'd like to recognize my Vice Chair and Vice Speaker, Ms. Anthony Ada.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Calvo and Mr. Aguilar for coming before and accepting the governor's appointment to the, to the board, hearing the, the questions and the answers that have gone back and forth between my colleagues and the two of you. You know, it just goes to show the, the vast knowledge that you have and are willing to share with the, with the, the rest of the board. Mr. Aguilar, I just want you to know that though your position is an alternate, your position is just as important as every other board member there. And I want you to know that your input, I believe, will be just as valuable, if not more valuable than all the other members. It just goes to show that when folks come up and start giving of their time and of theirselves, you know, it's, being a board member is not easy because then you have to juggle between private life, government work, and volunteer work. But with you guys coming up, I believe that we have a very strong board. And Mr. Kanata, you, you have them as well. So it, it just goes to show how working together is very important. I think you said, Ms. Calvo, you, you said something that was very interesting and that's preservation with progress, which I think is very important. I, I think when we see these dynamic times now where tourism is down, I think what people have been wanting to come to Guam for is not just the beaches and the sand and, you know, the, the sun. I think they want to know more about our culture and our heritage. And it brings me back to about maybe 2017, 2016, when I met with a gentleman, his name is Mr. Ken Haga. And he was always speaking about, our tourists want to come to know more about our history, Guam's history, not just about the war, but about the people and the culture. And it was back then when we couldn't really get more culture activities, more, you know, we, we got the, we got the dinner shows that go on, but other, other cultural scenes and other cultural histories that they can take and move with them when, when they go, right? So I think that when our tourism starts to rebuild, I think preservation and history knowledge of Guam, as they start building together, will be something that our, our visitors can take back with them. I, I don't have any questions for you. I just, I just want to know that, well, maybe just want, maybe Mr. Kanata, you can answer this. Would their appointments make the, do you currently have a quorum or do you need their appointments to have a quorum for your board?
It is, it is very, very important that, that we move forward with your appointments because it's been a year. And that's why Senator Taitogui, that's why you, when you went into the website, the minutes of, the last minute of the meeting was in May of last year. We haven't had a quorum since then. And it is important that we move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kanata. And again, thank you both for your willingness to step up and the importance. Now it's even more important that your, your confirmations move forward and get voted upon so that we can have this quorum made for, for the board. Okay. I'm looking, I'm looking forward to voting on your nominations. I don't do this often, but I just want you to know that you both have my support and my vote for your, to be on this board. So thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Vice Chair. First, I want to say congratulations again and thank you, Sisus Massey, for accepting this appointment. And I'm happy to know that finally we have submissions for appointment. And now that we're processing this, we have honestly, we've, we've pushed for this confirmation, you know, hearing to, to, to move forward. However, unfortunately, in our last, scheduled last week, our AC went down. So now here we are and I'm happy, truly, truly elated for the appointments that we have here today because based on all your testimonies and other people's testimonies and your credentials, I think we lucked out to have two incredible board members. It's not easy to sign up as a volunteer. I was board member in other agencies in the past, board director. And it's true what Vice Speaker said, that you have to balance everything from your personal life to your business, to whatever your involvement is. And then being a board director or a board member entails a lot of things to do. You're not just reading scripts or you're not just thinking about things on, in front of you on that very moment, but you're actually planning the future for your island. Each segment of the agency where board members volunteer. Now, you both have a huge responsibility on your shoulders, huge responsibility, I may say, because you are like, you have to guard our island's treasure. And when you talk about preservation of our historical sites, that's your treasure. That's, that's, that's our treasure, our island's treasure. And you know what? This has, it's, we've, we've come to the point in time where tourists are not looking for tiny little mini Americana anymore. They're not looking for, for luxury places to go to. But what we have, like you guys mentioned earlier, what we have here in our island are treasures. We should utilize what we have. The historical sites, we should involve all the villages. All villages have historical sites. These are the things that we need to prioritize because it has a big play in our tourism recovery efforts. And we don't want to be known as just a military hub. We want to have and preserve our own identity. And these are the things that we wanted to showcase in a global stage. So on that note, I don't really have any questions, but I look forward to working closely with both of you because, you know, as you know, my interest is preservation, museum, tourism, all these things play a key role. So I look forward to your confirmation and thank you so much. Thank you for your participation in accepting the nomination. So on that note, thank you to each and every one of you who provided testimony today and to who attended to render your support. The committee will continue to receive testimony within five business days from today's hearing. You may submit your testimony to the Guam Legislature Mailroom or via email at officeofsenatorshellycalvo@gwamelaboratory.gov. We will take a short recess and come back for the next items on our agenda. That is Bill 124-38COR, Bill 129-38COR, Bill 130-38COR, and Bill Number 42-38COR. We're going to take a two-minute recess. See you again. See you again.
Sido Smasi.
We're now back in recess, from recess. We're back from recess. I would like to thank my colleagues and everyone who are joining up this morning. Just a friendly minor, all rules of engagement still stand during this proceeding. At this time, we will now discuss the next item on our agenda, and that is Bill Number 124-38COR. Main sponsor of the bill is Ms. Senator Telotie Tai Tegui. An act to amend Section 403 N of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code annotated relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Assan to its name in the Chamor language, namely Assan Maena. Bill Number 124-38COR is an act to amend Section 403 N of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Annotated Relative to Changing the Official Name of the Municipality of Assan to its name to Chamor language, namely Assan Maena. I will open up the floor to my colleague and the prime sponsor of Bill 124-38COR for her opening remarks. Senator Telotie Tai Tegui, you are now recognized, ma'am.
Half a day and a good morning, Madam Chair. And to my colleagues and, of course, the people of Guam, thank you for the opportunity to speak on Bill 124-38. You know, today I speak not just as a senator, but I speak as a daughter of Guam with a deep love for our island, our people, and our history. I humbly present Bill 124-38, which may appear to be a simple legislative change, but in truth, it's a profound affirmation of identity. Bill 124 seeks to restore the rightful name of Assan to its true Chamor form as Assan Maena. This name, like the names of the six other villages we have successfully restored, was not assigned to us by maps or colonizers. These are the names spoken by our elders, echoed in chants, offered in prayers, and remembered in stories passed down at our kitchen tables. This movement is not unique to Guam. Across the globe, indigenous communities are leading efforts to reclaim original place names, languages, and culture identifications that were erased and altered by colonization. We owe it to our Manomcu, to our children, and to the generations yet to come to preserve what is ours. Because our language disappears, so does the soul of our people. We live in a time when many feel displaced, disconnected from their heritage, and unsure where they belong. This measure tells our people, we belong here. You are seen. Your language, your history, your lineage, they matter. They are not relics of the past. They are the foundation of our future. To those who came before us, to the Manomcu's who still speak our language and remember when these names were spoken freely, this is for you. To the youth who carry our future, this is a promise that your culture will not be left behind. Naming is power. Reclaiming, it is self-determination. Yes, there are many administrative updates to make. Yes, not everyone may understand or agree, but the truth remains. This is our land, our language, our story. And no one should speak it for us. Let us not be the generation that stood by while our identity faded. Let us be the generation that fought to keep it alive. Sido Smasi, Madam Speaker, Chair.
Thank you, Senator Telotie Tegui. At this time, I would like to open the floor for testimonies and discussion from individuals who provide your testimony and discussion. Before we begin to make sure, please state your name and speak directly to the microphone. I'd like to recognize two important individuals in the room, and they're the ones who are going to provide their testimony. Congressman Robert Andrud, welcome, and, of course, Mayor Frankie Salas. Thank you, sir. Would you like to begin, Mayor?
Thank you very much. Buenos dias, Chairperson Senator Shelly Cavill, Senator Telotie Tegui, Senator Theresa Lai, and off the panel. On behalf of the residents of Assan Maena, I stand before you today to present my testimony in strong support of Bill Number 124-34COR, an act to amend the 403 N of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated Relative to Changing the Official Name from Municipality of Assan Maena to Assan in name in Chamor language, namely Assan Maena. I am Frankie Salas, resident of Assan of 74 years, as I address before you today, to commemorate this historic milestone of our village and to proudly celebrate the restoration of our municipality's original name. This significant change honors our culture, heritage, and native language, strengthening our connections to Chamor traditions. Our residents and the municipality planning council celebrate this amendment as it marks the fulfillment of a longstanding aspiration. As some, many see this as a minor adjustment. For me, as a current mayor of Assan Maena, it's a remarkable achievement. It represents an important step, embrace, important step to preserving and visualizing our identity, inspiring youth generation to embrace and carry forward the Chamor culture. We hope this decision encourages them to deepen this understanding of our history and traditions, ensuring that our legacy continues to thrive. Though my written testimony, I proudly reaffirm that Assan Maena is a municipality's original name, and its restoration marks a meaningful victory for our community. I would like to say thank you to Senator Telotie Tegui, Senator Shelly Cavill, and Senators Theresa Lai, and my mayor's council, municipal planning council, and the most important is our residents of Assan Maena. Respectfully, Frankie Salas, Mayor of Assan Maena. Thank you.
Sido Smasi, Mayor Salas. Congressman?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And buenos dias. Todos estamos en la memoria de la legislatura. Then I'd also like to extend my congratulations and gratitude to Senator Tai Tegui for introducing this, and also to congratulate Mayor Salas, who not only, he didn't wait for this legislation. He and the community of Assan have already changed all their signs years ago. So I want to acknowledge that and congratulate him for that. So, you know, sometimes the people lead. And in this instance, the people are leading. And so I want to congratulate him for that. So I just want to make a couple of general remarks. And I've made this clear. I'm the head of the Comité Naan Lugat. And actually, as written in the law, this is actually the, the Komissioni Finotamoro also doubles as the Komissioni Naan Lugat for place names. It's pretty clear the distinction of what is meant by place names and geographic names. So the Komission maintains jurisdiction over geographic names. So we've been in the process now, I think, for the past several weeks, naming watersheds, which normally people don't think about. But that's a geographic feature. And it's, those are maps that are actually used by people interested in aquifers and in hydrology. So with the cooperation of Dr. Nathan Habana, we've been able to identify those place names. And we're reviewing the watershed names, and we'll probably approve those watershed names in the next meeting. He's also presented names for rivers, which is also another geographic feature. And so if you look at the map of rivers, they're not all sort of consistent. And sometimes they take a different bend, and then they get a new name. So that's another issue that the Komission is taking on. But of course, the major item that attracts attention is the names of villages. So just to remember that there are three historical district names that are not Chamor. Santarita, Tamuning, and Agania Heights. So we felt very strongly, and most people have agreed to this point, that those names have to be modified to include a Chamor name. So Santarita has been altered to Santarita Sumai. So that sort of adjusts that and recognizes the historical connection, actually, between Santarita, which was not really widely recognized before World War II, and the connection to people from Sumai who were basically forced to move to Santarita. Tamuning, the actual site of Tamuning, the original designation came from Carolinians who settled in what is now Apotquan. Now, there's a hotel there near Dunkas Beach and across from Alupan. And so that area was settled by Carolinians who named it Tamuning. And I can't really get the pronunciation down correct. So whatever it was originally, the Chamor people who lived there changed it to Tamuning. So now it's become Tamuning. And in the law, it's Tamuning-Tumon. That's the official name of that district. Then the other district, of course, is Agania Heights. And that's going to invite some controversy because the actual name is Tutuhan. And almost everybody, I have to say, I have to say this. Everybody who first moved to Agania Heights right after World War II all basically acknowledged that they were moving to Tutuhan. And so Tutuhan embraces a little bit of a larger area. But basically, you know, I think the Komission is working its way towards proposing that... towards proposing that Tamuning-Tomhum and Agania Heights-Tutuhan is a kind of a compromise. And that way, all the villages in Guam will have at least a Chamorro place name attached to it. The issue, and I'll try to read from the code so that I make sure that we understand the purpose of this. So the Comisione Naan Lugat is to develop, implement, and advise interested parties on a coherent culturally sound and historically accurate set of criteria for selecting place names and to provide advice on signage and other things. Then the subset for that is to study ancient Chamorro terminology and pronunciation of place names and restore affirmation pronunciation with the current Chamorro orthography. So that's pretty clear. So what does that mean? Well, in the case of ordinary place names, like rivers or place names, the Comision has some work in trying to make a call on place names that are commonly seen as, like Jonestown or Perrisville. Is there really, did they put out of focus other names? Bazagardens, Camp Witi, Camp Deely. There's many, many place names. There's over, in the current list we have, there's over 1,100 place names in Guam that have to be examined along those lines. But with respect to village names, so the spelling of village names, I offer this as a possibility. I hope the legislature considers it seriously, that the legal requirement to study ancient Chamorro terminology and pronunciation of place names and restore affirmation aforementioned pronunciation with current Chamorro orthography offers you just the opportunity to say, okay, from now on, we don't have to rename Dedido. We'll just follow the Chamorro orthography because that's what it calls for in the law. And the same thing for Tamuning and Tomhum. So again, that's just following the dictates of the law. Now, I don't know whether, you know, that's passing it along to the Comision, but it's clear that that's the intent of the Guam Legislature and intent of the public law. I would say, of course, that doesn't apply to Agania Heights-Tutuhan because that's, like Assanmaina is actually the creation of a new name for an old district. And so, you know, I really resonate with the idea that these are not artifacts of the past. They're not just artifacts of the past. They're really a plan for the future. And that, it's important to understand that and to actually take those words into meaningful practice. There's always a tendency to love everything Chamorro but not do anything about it. I love the Chamorro language. I love the Chamorro culture. I love Chamorro dancers. I love Chamorro music. But when push comes to shove, well, you know, there are more important things to do. And so if for no other symbolic act, this is the, a place name is the most symbolic thing you can do. Like the vice speaker, you know, I grew up in Senanya. So, but I'm 76 years old, and I only lived nine years in Senanya. But every time someone asks me, "Tautou Manaho", I say, "Tautou Senanya", because that's my identity. And so identifying with a place is absolutely critical. I don't say Tautou Jonestown or Tautou Bazagardens, which two places actually live longer than. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Congressman. At this point, I will open the floor to my colleagues for any questions or comments that they might have. Colleagues, please be mindful of the five minutes allotted to you for discussion and questions for the current agenda item. I'm going to go ahead and recognize Senator Sean Gomatautau.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to one of my favorite mayors on island, only because, I would say that because you're the only mayor in front of us today. I used to say you're our favorite today. And thank you for all your service to the people of Guam. And also to Dr. Underwood. It's nice to see you again. I know we had a chance to see each other recently when you were here presenting to the Guam Legislature. I really only have one question, and if I can. And I just wanted to start with this. In written testimony that's dated March 10, 2021, for the public hearing on Bill 60-36 COR, which became, well, which later became Public Law 36-16, which is the renaming of Inalahan. Dr. Underwood, you commented in your testimony that while you fully understood the authority of the legislature, the Comision, which you represented at the time and today, requested that you be allowed to manage the process of selecting the place names. And you also recognized that the process would be time-consuming, and I think you mentioned some of it today, involve considerable research and consensus building. And with respect to the village of Assan, the words will look startling to some upon first view, their first time seeing the word Assan, where there are clearly two S's. And based on your comments from the 36 Guam Legislature, I'm a new lawmaker today. Can you share with us what information is available regarding any coordination on this matter between the Comision and the Assan Municipal Planning Council prior to the introduction of Bill 124?
Well, I've had a long public career. I hope you don't hold me responsible for everything I've ever said.
Oh, no, it's a good thing. I'm just not being critical.
Well, yes, of course, we've been coordinating with the mayor. And we've coordinated with the mayor on this. And we basically left it up for them. And in the case of other areas, which I think are likely to invite more conversation, I've had conversations with the previous mayor of Agania Heights and the current mayor. Of course, we had, I think, two or three public meetings in Agania Heights, which were well-attended, perhaps the most well-attended ever. And of course, I look forward to talking to my fellow Tamuning-Tomhum residents in the municipal council. The rest of it is not really, I'm assuming it's not really all that controversial. Of course, when you see, you know, Assan spelled with two S's for the first time, it might startle you. If you remain startled after a month, I recommend getting new glasses or something because, you know, that's just the way it's supposed to be spelled. So, you know, it's like changing from Magania to Hagatnia, which many of you may remember. Everybody predicted doom and gloom, and people will never use it and never say it. And of course, what happens is that they do accommodate themselves. And so that's basically, I assume, what will happen. And so now, you know, when I read, you know, crime reports about Santarita Sumai resident so-and-so and Inalahan resident so-and-so, I think then that's when it's become generally acceptable. When it wakes it to the crime reports, then it really, now, and it makes it to your driver's license. So people will, you know, be sort of surprised by that. But I think after a while, they just get acclimated to it. And I think of greater consequence would actually be place names like Jonestown. So, you know, what do you do with Jonestown? So I always remind people that as much authority as the Guam Legislature may think it has or the Comision may think it has, Google Maps and Apple Maps actually have more authority because people consult Google Maps and Apple Maps. And of course, if you have a business, you can get your business more prominently featured in Apple Maps and Google Maps. A couple of times, I've taken a taxi from the airport to my home in what is currently Jonestown. And when I tell the driver, maybe five years ago, six years ago, I'm going to Jonestown, they know where I'm going. Now, the drivers don't know. Where's that? So it's already kind of dissipating in kind of the general mind. So they say, oh, you're going to Oka. And I say, yeah, that's right. That's the actual name of the place is Oka. So over time, I think people get, I think people adjust pretty quickly, especially given the impetus for this. This is not going to financially benefit anybody. It's really an appeal to our sense of our identity. And it's pretty strong.
All right, thank you, Dr. Underwood. As a resident of Aslukas in Talafofol, I appreciate the lesson today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Gomatautau. And now I'd like to recognize Senator Telo Taitegri.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, thank you so much for all the hard work that the mayor of Assan has done and for being here today to supporting this legislation, especially to the municipal council, who took a lot of notes and answered a lot of questions from their residents as well. Greatly appreciate that you were very transparent in this. And if I'm not mistaken, quite a bit of meetings were held in order to ensure that this is the route that this village wants to take. So it's very important for that reach out. Of course, Dr. Underwood, working with you for years now on these name changes, it's been an honor to do so. And it's been taxing too. Sometimes when you get certain villages who want to maintain their name due to everything from businesses having to change their business cards or their name on their stationery or, you know, et cetera, down the line. But that's just a small price to pay to keep our heritage alive, our culture alive, our language alive. We lose our language, we've lost everything of who we are, our identity. So I appreciate the work on that. I do have a question, though, for the Comision. If the, well, I'm praying this bill does go through. I'm hoping it will. And once it becomes law, how will the Comision, what will they do? Their task due to inform the government agencies of the name change as well as federal side as well?
Well, once the laws pass, it just becomes a mandate for all government agencies to respond. And they will respond quickly. Media outlets will respond very quickly. And so that's very engaging. The Comisioni Finotamoro is the official place names commission for the Bureau of Geographic Names of the USGS. So, you know, the federal government will respond to that very quickly. Up until maybe about, I think we signed that MOU with the Bureau of Geographic Names about two or three years ago. Up to that time, the federal government accepted naming from a lot of different sources, and most often, you know, other federal agencies. So that's, the Department of Defense had, you know, outsized input into place names in Guam because they were the ones who were passing on things like Marbo and Potts Junction and Agafa Gumas and things like that. And that's how those names got into the official US maps. But now the Bureau of Geographic Names recognizes the Comision as the state agency. And the Bureau of Geographic Names recognizes other state agencies, a single agency for each state or territory. So we are that.
But the Comision is not an agency.
For purposes of place names, it is the state naming agency for the government of Guam.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll talk to you about the other, the bill that's coming. But, you know, for the Comision, do they take that? I know it becomes law, but do you take a concerted effort to really, you know, notify the government agencies of these name change? Or do you just?
I think so, but, you know, in reality, I mean, I don't know. What are we going to do? Find them if they don't follow it? I'm not sure in terms of like officially notifying people. So our primary attention right now is like focused on actual place names. So the village names will sort of fall into place one way or another. So the place names are a little bit more complex. So that's really like, you know, like Talafofol has over 100 place names. And we're trying to figure out, you know, there's different, and different elders say different things. So that's a little complicated.
I was part of a meeting that you had up at Agania Heights. Was there, and we had a lot of constituents there, the village, those who are from the village who did not want any name change whatsoever. It was, you know, it was kind of hurtful, you know, to think that Agania Heights was actually something that was derived from the military, just calling, moving everyone from Agania up the hill and just saying, okay, let's just call this Agania Heights. And it had no real true meaning of the area, unfortunately. But, you know, I think that we may go back to the drawing board for Agania Heights. I'm speaking to the mayor about it. So hopefully, we can have another meeting with Agania Heights and not give up. My whole point is not giving up, you know, that's the thing. Once we stop, then it's never going to happen. But if we keep trying, there's a possibility. So let's not give up. And what is the latest one that you've been working on right now? On which village?
It would be Agania Heights, and it would be Tamuning-Tomhum.
Okay, and I'm from Tamuning, so I'll be there. So thank you so much again. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taitegri. At this point, Senator Teres Trelai, you already recognized.
Sido Smasi, Madam Chair. And thank you for your testimony to the people of Assanmaina who are here. Sido Smasi. And thank you to, first of all, the mayor and for your work on this and getting consensus. I think that's the most important part. And that we, as the legislature, are happy to just make sure that all the books that we are in control of reflect that. And congratulations to the Comision on getting that MOU with the Bureau of Geographic Names so that we have one voice speaking to them about our formal actions. And I guess, so I support this, of course. But if I could just ask a couple of questions, I just want to make sure it's very clear. Assan and Maina, totally different villages, right? Different places, really. And we are just combining them together only for the sake of this legal municipality that the legislature has kind of artificially created, right? I mean, that's what we've created. But if you could just talk a little bit about, are there other places in Assan and Maina that are being kind of combined in here or normally?
Well, you combine Nimitz Hill, parts of Nimitz Hill. So, you know, that's probably a more potentially controversial issue. Do you want to rename Nimitz Hill, that part that's in Libugun? So do we want to stop calling it Nimitz Hill and start calling it Libugun? Then you go over to the other side and you get into PT. And then do you want to call it Tiguan? So you have Nimitz Hill's estates. Those are more potentially, I would assume, potentially more difficult issues. But the point that I want to make is that the more people think about it, the more they will consider it and then kind of mull it over in their mind. And so I'm hopeful that the same thing will happen with Agania Heights-Tutuhan, that after a while, people just say, you know. And I remember, you know, I don't want to get too personal, Senator Trelai, but one of the first people I talked to about Agania Heights was your father.
Yeah, I know, I remember.
So I asked him, I said, you know, Eddie, when you first moved there, well, "Afa Tuma Fananan Legna, Tutuhan", when you first moved there, everybody called it Tutuhan. And there's many kind of documents which refer to it as Tutuhan. But, you know, that doesn't alleviate the whole situation. But yeah, and I'm glad you made that point. The reason why the legislature needs to be clear on the name of these villages is because they are political jurisdictions. They are places that have political importance for property records, for taxes, for voting, for residency. So, you know, Assan and Maina were kind of lumped together in that, in the way that the island was carved up originally. Could have been carved up differently. They could have put Maina into Agania Heights, you know. Could have been done that way. But for whatever reason, when the municipalities were created, they weren't done that way.
All right. I just have a little bit more time. Can I ask this? If you could just share with everyone listening the meaning, if any, of Assan and Maina to you, mayor? The words, I guess.
The meaning of Assan is actually, when I look into it, Assan is Assan is something like, try and say it's very, if you add an H on that, means hassen, meaning it's very rare. And Assan is, another definition is similar to rare. Now for Maena is a lining from, in the morning blessing, like flashing lights to the village where they're blessed. If you go on Google and you read them, there's a lot of definitions in that, too, besides Maena. And I just want to bring this all, that even so, I handle Assan Maena. Our village, we are registered with some Adalup and Nimitz Hill, and just to include a turner road. And if you look into the map showing, most likely you see on the GPA map, where my boundary is. It's a large place where I handle. And like I said, it's not only Assan Maena.
On what map, did you say? On what map?
GPA or something like.
Yeah, because I've heard the utilities, they've described Assan.
Yeah, even Google Maps, you see that, too.
Okay.
Yes. So we have a large places to handle and part of Adalup. But Adalup is very small. Maena is another one, and of course, Nimitz Hill. Where they call it Assan, if you look at it, there's an Assan overlook bay. That's the national park. Furthermore, up the hill, that's where the limit to where the channel is at. That's part of our village, too. So the Maena and Assan, yes, a lot of meaningful. Even before being a mayor, I seen that sign was already placed up on the community center, which is built since the 19s. It says the same spelling, A-S-A-M. So I believe that's the real Chamorro Assan name.
Where is that?
This place, the North Community Center.
Oh, the community.
It's a cement made, really made sign before I even been a mayor, 2016.
You was ahead of us, okay. Sidoos Masi, Mayor. Dr. Underwood, anything else you want to add?
Well, yeah, I just want to add that Assan is probably one of the most important historical villages on the island. I mean, people kind of underplay that, maybe they don't remember. It's the, we're just kind of commemorating the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War and what happened in Camp Assan, where there's the only area outside the fence where thousands of Vietnamese refugees were placed. It's also the home of the Philippine political exiles coming that were placed here by the US at the end in Assan. And Assan is the only village that I know of that has a poem written about it by someone as distinguished as Apollinario Mabini, who was imprisoned in Assan. He wrote a poem called "Ode to Assan." And, you know, so, and then, of course, it was the major invasion beach during World War II. So there's a lot of history to Assan. And it's clearly two S's. It's Assan, and it's not Asan, which I used to hear when I was a little bit younger. People thought they were being very fancy by saying Asan. But, you know, it's, I want to congratulate the mayor and his team again because that shows not just responsiveness, but forward thinking. So Assan is a very special place.
Sidoos Masi. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Now I'd like to recognize Senator Will Parkinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just be very brief. I agree with the testimony that there is power in names, and I'm happy to support this legislation, and thank you for your continued work and efforts in this field. With that, Madam Chair, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Dr. Underwood, for all your testimonies. Just wanted to offer my two cents on this. I understand very much so, and I support the effort. And a lot of what you guys mentioned earlier is duly noted. Just, you know, for the record, just wanted to say that. And I think it is truly important to have identity, you know, to reinforce the identity of our island. It's not just for the next generation, not just for us right now. And I totally understand that we all have to, like, be in the same page in doing efforts like this because, like I mentioned earlier, it doesn't just play within us, it doesn't just a recognition. But we are presenting our island in a global stage. We have to be uniform in many, many things. And we always have to look back in the roots and the heritage and the culture of our island to be able to package us accordingly. So on that note, I believe I will be the first co-sponsor for this bill. Madam sponsor?
In my closing remarks, I was going to mention that also, put you as the first co-sponsor, along with Senator Therihi, and of course, any other senator who wished to be on it. I will be making that recommendation on the floor so that we get full support. But thank you so much, Madam Chair, for having this public hearing on this bill. And hopefully, I can bring more of the name changes to your committee so that we can hear them expeditiously. Thank you.
I truly appreciate it. So if there are no further questions, I have no questions. I fully support the intent in this bill. I would like to yield to the prime author for her closing statement.
Yes, already. I'm good. Thank you so much. But Robert Underwood would like to do my closing for me right now, if you'd like to. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say for the record, I endorse the other pieces of legislation coming up for the komisyon.
Thank you, I truly appreciate that.
Sir, mayor?
Well, thank you very much for supporting our bill. And I'd like to recognize my municipal planning council.
Thank you.
And of course, my staff are here. And some residents of Assan. I totally forgot, when I was here on the panel, I totally forgot to say good morning, Vice Speaker Tonya. And she's not, she's not here. Anyway, thank you very much for all the support. And in the future, you know, we work together again. And against Don Kuluna, Sidoos Masi, for what we have here now in this session. Sidoos Masi.
And Don Kuluna, Sidoos Masi, as well. And thank you to everyone that's here who gave testimonies, as well as all the support that we have here in the room. Thank you all very much. My office will continue to receive testimony within five business days from today's hearing. You may submit your testimony to the Guam Legislature Mailroom or via email at officeofsenatorshellycalvo@guamlegislature.gov. Thank you all, and Bill 124-38COR is duly heard. We will now move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is Bill Number 129-38COR. We will now discuss the next item on our agenda, and that is Bill Number 129-38COR, introduced by myself, Senator Shelley V. Calvo, an act to add a new section 1041 to Chapter 10, Title I, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Establishing February 21 of each year as Haanen Hila Nana or Mother Language Day. As the prime author of Bill 129, I will begin by giving my opening remarks. Half a day and Sidoos Masi to everyone who is here with us today. I want to begin by expressing my deep appreciation to each individual, organization, educator, and advocate who took the time to be present and to submit testimony in support of concern of Bill Number 129-38. Our language champions, cultural bearers, elders, and community members play a central role in the success of any initiative aimed at preserving and revitalizing our Chamorro heritage. And I am truly grateful for your contributions to this hearing. The measure before us, Bill Number 129-38, seeks to formally establish February 21 of each year as Haanen Hila Nana or Mother Language Day in the territory of Guam. This is not a new concept globally. February 21 is observed as International Mother Language Day under UNESCO's declaration. However, this bill gives Guam the opportunity to infuse that observance with our own meaning, grounded in the historical and cultural importance of Ifinutsumoro to the identity of our people. Language is more than vocabulary and grammar. It is a worldview. It is our connection to the land, to our ancestors, and to each other. Our language carries stories, customs, values, and unique ways of understanding the world that are irreplaceable. Yet today, the Chamorro language faces a continued decline in everyday use and intergenerational transmission. Without deliberate collective action, we risk losing this living expression of who we are. This bill is not a complete solution to language loss, but it is a step forward. By designating Haanen Hila Nana as a recurring day of awareness and celebration, we create a focal point every year for reflection, education, and community engagement around the importance of our native language. It is a time for schools to incorporate cultural programming, for families to share stories in Chamorro, for civic institutions to highlight linguistic diversity, and for all of us to renew our shared commitment to protecting what is sacred. The bill also directs Imaga Haga or Magalahe to issue a proclamation each year and tasks i komisyon Ifinutsumoro jan, ifinunagwen i historian jan, ilanala Taytao Tano. With planning and observance, these actions aim to institutionalize and support an ongoing effort, not just a one-time campaign, while allowing flexibility on how different communities choose to celebrate and reflect. Ultimately, this legislation is a tribute to our roots and a call to action for our future. It honors those who kept the Chamorro language alive through adversity and invites new generations to reclaim it with pride. I thank my colleagues for their time and consideration, and I look forward to hearing from our community today. Your insights and testimony will help strengthen not only this bill, but the larger movement to protect and elevate the Chamorro language for generations to come. At this point, I would like to open up the floor for testimony and discussion. Individuals who will provide testimony. Before you begin, please state your full name and speak directly in the microphone. Madam? Laura Marie Torres-Soudar, and I'm the Gehilu for the Komisyon Ifinutsumoro. And I'm joined here by other members of the komisyon, Senora Hope Cristobal, Senora Rosa Palomo, and Senor, I don't know if he's still here, Senor Robert Underwood, as well as the staff and colleagues of the Komisyon Ifinutsumoro. And I thank you all for the opportunity to welcome this bill wholeheartedly. We totally and wholeheartedly support the bill, recognizing February 21 as Haanen Hila Nana. We have been celebrating Haanen Hila Nana as a komisyon, and the governor and the legislature have introduced proclamations and resolutions to support Hila Nana. The United Nations has declared the decade of indigenous languages, 2023 to 2032. So it is very timely, Senator Calvo, and I thank you for this, to officially designate February 21 as Hila Nana Day or Mother Language Day. And we will report to the United Nations that this has been done once the bill is passed. Hopefully, it will be passed, yes. So we fully and joyfully accept the responsibility to plan and make appropriate arrangements for the observation of this day. Sometimes, you know, when people are given additional responsibilities, they say, oh, no, but we welcome this responsibility because we joyfully celebrate our language in all that we do as a komisyon. And this really puts it into official perspective because the legislature is saying we want to officially recognize this day that has been set aside by indigenous people all over the world as the day when we celebrate our mother tongue. So thank you for that.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, I will open the floor to my colleagues for any questions or comments they might want to have. Colleagues, please be mindful, the five minutes allotted to you for discussions and questions for the current agenda item. I'd like to begin with Senator Gumatautau. You're a recenser.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Lord, for testifying today. Just for the record, Madam Chair, so BBMR requested a fiscal note waiver stating that the bill is administrative in nature and would not fiscally impact the appropriations for FY 2025. Although the fiscal note waiver noted that the bill would not fiscally impact the appropriations for '25, the fiscal year, understandably, because we're already in the month of May, what information, if any, is available regarding potential fiscal impacts to appropriations beginning in FY '26, should the bill become law?
Sir, there won't be any direct impact because we're already actively engaged in celebrating Haanen Hila Nana. And it permeates through everything that we do and culminates kind of in a celebration on February 21. So there won't be any direct additional monies requested for this other than what we already appropriated for our operations.
Okay, thank you. And recognizing that the bill does not propose an official holiday requiring the closure of government operations with the exception of critical services, what information is available regarding the level of coordination and expenditures that are required on the part of the government of Guam to implement and support similar celebrations in the past, including but not limited to War Survivor Remembrance Day and maybe Peace Officers Memorial Day?
I can't speak to what the cost, the budgetary implications were of those kinds of celebrations, but, you know, we just need to communicate with the community that this is a day we want to celebrate. We'll coordinate with the schools, other cultural agencies, and just spread the word. But basically, the observation is to recognize that Mother Tongue Day does exist and that we're celebrating, in our case, Ifinutsumoro, so that our people can join in the celebration with us. Well, I'm sure we're going to start planning ways that we can enhance people's understanding and knowledge of the Chamorro language and kick off some kind of, you know, celebration that we can share with the community. But it's not so much the cost of these things, but the focus. So I think that by making it an official observance of Guam, even if it's not an official holiday, that you put it on to the radar, you know, and we can write about it, the press will absolutely issue press releases, they'll create stories about it, we can talk about it in the media so that people can become aware that we're celebrating this special day.
All right, thank you so much. I only have one more question, Madam Chair. Since the enactment of Public Law 32-145 in April of 2014, establishing Guam History and Chamorro Heritage Day on the first Monday of March each year, how exactly has our community, including GDOE and the Department of Chamorro Affairs, incorporated the Chamorro language into this annual holiday, particularly programs which could help, as Bill 129 seeks to do, which is to affirm the importance of cultivating a deeper understanding and use and use of the Tamora language in our homes?
The day, which used to be, you know, in traditional days, it was Magellan's Day, and then it became Discovery Day, and then it became Guam History Day, and now it's Tamora Heritage Day. That day kind of kicks off all of the Mes Tamora activities. So it always is, you know, celebrated, all the material that goes out is both give Ifino Tsamoro zan, Ifino English, of course, for people who don't understand Tamora. But it does kick off, it kind of galvanizes or is a kind of central point for Mes Tamora activity kickoff's in the schools, as well as at the university, the Charter Day activities. There is also the contests, you know, the Tamora competitions that occur among the schools, both here at home, and we invite schools from the NMI. So they come and they have that Inatsa Egin celebration or competition. So it brings a lot of focus to the language. Of course, we should be focusing on our language every day of the year, right? But this kind of galvanizes attention and allows people to create celebrations and activities, competitions, showcasing performances, there are proclamations and resolutions, you know, that also accompany those days, recognition of the work of different organizations in the community. So it kind of is a galvanizing point.
All right, thank you so much. And thank you, Madam Chair, for the time to ask questions from this bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Gumantautau. Senator Telo Taitogui, you're now recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And good afternoon again. Thank you, ladies, for being here today and, of course, being advocates for our language, keeping it alive, and teaching not only our next generation, but the generation that we fell short on. And that's that in-between age group, you know, and mine, I think after, okay, I'm not ashamed. I'm going to be 65 next week. So we've got those who are like in their 50s and 60s, and none of us knew the language, you know. It had stopped. During my time, we didn't have Tamora class in school. So there's a big gap. But what I'm seeing nowadays is I'm seeing the younger generation, those in their, you know, 20s now who are speaking more Tamora than ever before in history. So this is a good thing. We just need to take care of that gap in between, the people my age and down to about in their 40s. We need help there. And it would be wonderful to have this day. There's no reason why we can't have February 21 to commemorate the Mother Language Day. That day, we should demand that everybody speak in Tamora, regardless if they sound funny or they're making fun of you or mispronouncing or actually saying lingoahi instead, I mean, instead of saying lingoahi, saying linguine, like I did one time. And, you know, I was hungry that afternoon. Even my colleagues wanted me to hurry up, you know, in my speech. But it's that. We should not make fun of those people who try to speak it, even though it's mispronounced or what. We should allow them to continue on and then, you know, help to correct them because obviously, they want to do better. The only thing I think on this legislation that I see in front of me is probably change in Section B. It's line 12, page 2, where it says Imaga Haga in Guam shall issue. I think we should incorporate "may." It's one thing when you demand the governor to do something on certain things that gives her the opportunity to do on her own without being legislated. You know what I mean? And it's coming for her. She's doing this, or he, whoever becomes governor, doing this out of their heart. So instead of "shall," I think this something should be "may." You know, and then it moves in that direction as far as, you know, just demanding. Other than that, and Section C of the legislation, it also talks about "shall plan and make appropriate arrangements for the observance of this day, and Ikomision may delegate such planning to any other appropriate entity." What do you mean by this? What, yes. What do you see that means in this section on page 2, line 19? "And Ikomision may delegate such planning to any other appropriate entity."
Well, we didn't generate the bill, so the language, I think, came from Senator Calvo's office.
But your interpretation?
It would mean to me that we could also share the responsibility of the observation, of planning the observation. We're very collaborative in our work. We have many, many partnerships with organizations across Guam and throughout the diaspora. So, for example, we would share this information and facilitate ways that Tamoras everywhere can celebrate Ha Anin Hila Nana, for example. That's how I interpret it, Senator, that the responsibility is not ours alone, but we are the caretakers to make sure that it happens, right? So I consider that a call to not delegate or, you know, turn it over to somebody else, but rather to share the responsibility so that we have celebrations taking place wherever there are Tamoras.
I believe in your enabling legislation. The created komision actually has that ability for you to seek assistance from other agencies, like the University of Guam, DOE, some other agencies. I think you already have that ability to do so, to reach out to them. So incorporating this section, I, you know, looking at maybe requesting to strike out, "And Ikomision may delegate such planning to any other appropriate entity." I think that that just gives a really open blanket for you to force other areas to do it, especially if there's no funding or anything like that. But again, the komision in your enabling legislation actually gives you that power. So other than that, that's the only thing I see that we can take care of in this area. But I appreciate again your time and all the hard work, ladies, you put in. I know it's not just one meeting where you collect a stipend. It's beyond that. You're working outside of these meetings on your own, on your personal time, and I greatly, greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, and we really do. We are Obasko ba kind of a working board. We take this very seriously as all of us, as a vocation. This is our lifelong commitment. And so we're very, very much engaged.
Dedicated.
24/7. I did want to respond to a question that you asked earlier regarding the Asan Maina and the Naan Lugat, when you were saying, "How can we disseminate this information?" We do have social platforms, and we're getting very, we're getting very good now that we have staff that are very capable in that area to put out information on an ongoing basis regularly. We also have maps in our website that we will continuously upgrade to include new Tamora names. And we have a partnership with Bureau of Statistics and Plans, and they have a great mapping system. And so we have already agreed with them that as soon as the law changes a village name or a municipal name, that we will communicate that to them, and they will change their maps accordingly. They've even welcomed our input into, for example, the geographic naming that Dr. Underwood spoke about. So we will be updating Guam maps that way, at least these digital maps that are being held and organized by the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, aside from the federal government. And, you know, the National Park Service is very active in seeking our assistance in spelling Tamora references to places appropriately. So they're also actively engaged in that regard. So, you know, people are willing. You know, there might be a little bit of a cauca when, like in Agania Heights, to Tuhan. But people get accustomed to good change, and they begin to roll with it and accept it. There will always be the disgruntled few. No, we can't stop working on these things just because we hear a little bit of how-how here and there, right?
Totally agree. Thank you so much for that. And that's exciting news that there's just more to just, once this legislation becomes law, that it's just out there. So I'm really happy to hear that there's a lot more. And I'm sure Underwood, Robert Underwood, wanted to mention that. He just might have forgotten. But I greatly appreciate that. And, you know, you're right. A lot of people, I think, it's just afraid of change. And, I mean, life does change, you know, or circumstances does change. But the one thing that should not change is our identity and who we are. And our language defines us by that. It totally defines us. So I greatly appreciate it. And as far as the National Park Services, we had Nicole Calvo here. She works there. So we know that she can pass on this information too as well. And that's a great connection that we have. So thank you so much, ladies. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taitogui. Appreciate that. While, before I pass to deal to another senator, I'd like to address page 2, line 1620, concern of Senator Telo earlier. Just a question. It's not really a concern, right, Senator? I just want to offer some clarification on that one. "Komision may work," which Ms. Soudar already kind of dabbled into it. "So the komision may work collaboratively with other partners and agencies to ensure that the observance of Mother Language Day is successful." And in the event that, you know, the komision can delay. If, you know, if there are factors that would limit the celebration, komision can actually delay or modify the celebration as needed. You know, there are a lot of moving pieces, variables, that we cannot expect on a day-to-day. So that just gives komision the flexibility to reinforce the celebration. Thank you so much. Senator Telo, that's really a great question, and I'm glad to give clarification to your.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just for the record, it's in Section 8810, I'm sorry, 88107? Sorry, 88106. I was right the first time on Support Services. So thank you for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Telo. At this point, I'd like to recognize Senator Teres Terlahe. Madam?
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. And for those here from the komision who are testifying and in support, sisus massey. Of course, I totally support the bill. I think I was there. I was honored to be there at the first celebration of Ha Anin Hila Nana. And it was really beautiful, wonderful, most of all, inspiring. And so I just, of course, want to share all the resources of the legislature to broadcast that and make it equally inspiring to everyone. And I just encourage you to include as many people as possible so that, you know, we're just continuing to get on the same page as much as possible. But I'd like the bill, Madam Chair, that you've written, the findings, I think, are very good. They talk about, and I'm glad that they mentioned that, there is a decline in everyday use and intergenerational transmission, and it places the Tamora language at risk and also our collective memory, our resilience, all of it. So I'm glad that that is being recognized. I see that as one of the United Nations' purposes in recognizing this day globally. And they also recognize the importance of diversity and the different languages and indigenous languages in education, in strengthening education, in making sure, and as you have pointed out, that ancestral knowledge, all of it. But even in general education, daily education. So all I would recommend or suggest is that we add into our findings here that the United Nations has recognized, as you pointed out, Madam Chair, this day. Because I want to tie, I like the fact that it's tied to a global recognition of the importance of indigenous languages, the importance of diversity in language, and the importance to education. I just like that it's tied, that this is not just, it's great that Guam, we are also finding that and recognizing that. But I just want to strengthen it by saying this is a world recognition of Guam's indigenous language as well as being important to world knowledge, world education. That would be my suggestion. And otherwise, I'm so very grateful for all of you, for all of your work for so many years. Sisus massey.
Sisus massey, Senator Teres. And now I recognize Senator Will Parkinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll keep this brief. I support the work that you do, and I'm happy to support this bill and hope you continue to have much success in, you know, spreading the language, spreading the culture, and keep helping it alive. So thank you for doing your part. Thank you for being part of this community and engaged, and truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Will. At this time, if there are no more questions or comments, I will give my closing statement. Sisus massey to everyone, especially Dr. Laura Torres Soudar. Thank you. Sisus massey for komision to be, being here, present to render support. And to all my colleagues, sisus massey, who took the time to testify and participate today's hearing on Bill Number 129-38. This measure is about more than setting aside a single day. It's about setting a clear intention, an intention to honor our past, to protect our language, and to ensure that the future generations can speak, think, and dream in Ifino Tamora. I want to thank Ikomision Ifino Tamora, language advocates, and the many individuals who have spent years working to keep our native language alive. This bill is an acknowledgement of your work and a commitment to amplify it with public recognition and renewed focus. I also appreciate those who raised questions and concerns about implementation. Your feedback is important, and we will take it into account as we refine this measure to ensure that it is not only symbolic, but also actionable and sustainable. Ha Anin Hila Nana is not meant to replace the work already being done. It is meant to elevate it, to create space for reflection and celebration, and to invite our entire community to be part of this ongoing journey of language revitalization. I believe that by establishing these observances, we are helping to root our identity more deeply into the consciousness of our people in our institutions. Once again, sisus massey for your presence, your insights, and your passion. Your voices will help guide the next steps in moving this bill forward. Thank you all very much for your testimonies and for being here. My office will continue to receive testimony within five business days from today's hearing. You may submit your testimony to the Guam Legislature Mailroom or via email at officeofsenatorshellicavo@gwamelaboratory.gov. Thank you all. And Bill 129-38COR is duly heard. We will now move forward on the next item on the agenda, and that is Bill 130-38COR. Bill Number 130-38COR, introduced by myself, Senator Shelley B. Calvo, an act to amend subsection 1000A and subsection, sorry, sections 1025 and 1037 of Chapter 10, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend the title and section 88103 of Chapter 88, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to adopting Chamorro Orthography for Official Holidays and to updating the Enabling Act of Ecomision Ifino Chamorro Zan, Ifinanaguen Ihistoria Zan, Ilinala Itao Tao Tano. As a prime author of Bill 130, I will begin by giving my opening remarks. Have a day, and thank you for joining us today for the public hearing on Bill Number 130-38. A measure rooted in respect, remembrance, and revitalization. I want to begin by sincerely thanking everyone who made the time to be here today, cultural practitioners, educators, language advocates, community leaders, and members of the public, as well as my colleagues. Your voices, your stories, and your commitment to our Chamorro heritage are essential to this discussion. Bill Number 130-38 is a legislative effort to restore dignity and authenticity to the way we name and celebrate our most meaningful public holidays. It processes, proposes to adopt Chamorro Orthography in law, spelling Chamorro correctly, renaming Guam Discovery Day to Guam History and Chamorro Heritage Day, and expanding Chamorro Week into Mes Chamorro, a full month of celebration and reflection. These are more than technical changes. They are facts. They're acts of cultural recognition. They affirm who we are as a people and what we choose to honor in the public square. Our language, Ifino Chamorro, is not just a means of communication, is a keeper of our worldview, our history, and our identity. As stewards of public policy, we have a responsibility to ensure that our laws reflect the dignity of our people and the truth of our story, the story of our community, the story of our island, the story of our heritage. Today, I look forward to hearing our perspectives and your perspectives on this measure, your ideas, your support, your concerns. This hearing is an opportunity to work together to ensure that we enshine, enshrine in law reflects the values as we share, values that we share as a community. Sidoos Massey for being here and for lending your voice to this conversation. I'd like now to invite anyone who will offer testimony. Please proceed and sit on the panel. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Laura Marie Torres Souter, and I'm representing the comision and all of these wonderful advocates, members of the board, as well as members of our staff and our support team. And just right off the bat, we wholeheartedly support the idea of institutionalizing and codifying the orthography and orthographic spelling and the need for it. Consistency is key. Standardization is key if we want our language to continue to exist in future generations. Because as children are taught the language, they're not taught in the way that my generation was taught. And you've recognized that there were three generations that were disadvantaged because of the English-only policies that were promulgated in the early American administrative period and then post-war period, which discouraged the use of Chamorro. In schools, we were punished for saying Chamorro words. And it became a disadvantage. It was defined as a disadvantage. We're recovering some of that lost area, as you pointed out, Senator, that younger generations, people in their twenties, are beginning to have children who are going to school, and some of them are going to Chamorro schools because we now have two Chamorro education programs. And they are also learning Chamorro in school. And the parents are beginning to understand how critical it is that they learn to speak so that they can speak with their children and create that home nesting environment that is so critical to a language surviving and flourishing. So consistency is key. And as Dr. Underwood said a little earlier, everybody loves Chamorro, right? Everybody loves Ifino Chamorro. Everybody loves to say that they admire the Chamorro values and things like that. Lo antimanfi fino hit tai bali. Because without the language, a culture cannot survive for very much longer. Indigenous languages die at the rate of one every two weeks in the world. And this is our watch. And we have all declared that we don't want to be the generation that causes the disconnect with the gift that our ancestors have given us that has thrived for over 4,000 years. Well, if we are serious about that, sincere about that, then we have to take bold action. And codifying Chamorro is bold action, is bold action. It's saying that this is not just important in a kind of esoteric, cultural, feel-good way, but we are putting the law behind this, you know? Not that people are going to be thrown in jail if they don't spell Chamorro with a capital C, capital H, A-M-O-R-U. But what you're saying, if you pass this bill, is that we take this seriously as legislators because we are island leaders, and we have to lead that engagement. If the legislature is not doing it, if the government of Guam in general is not doing it, why should the ordinary citizen do it, right? So I think that that's very critical. And I really want to express the most profound appreciation, Senator Calvill, for your introducing this bill. Because naming makes a difference, not only place names, but the way we call things and how we spell things. And nationhood requires that we take ourselves seriously this way. So for the comision, it's extremely meaningful that we pay attention to the language, how we use our language. Because language is an important tool in the whole nation-building process. And if we bring consciousness to our people about this, then they will begin to integrate it into the way that they understand our identity. You know, our identity has been so fractured by colonialism, by colonial practice. And one way of overcoming that fracture is to heal through the recognition of how valuable the gift that our ancestors have given us. So this is so critical, and we feel very strongly about this. Obviously, this is our whole life's work and defines the meaning that we give to the work we do now. So we wholeheartedly agree and welcome this corrective action that will codify the spelling of Chamorro in the law and which recognizes the importance of being consistent in references to Chamorro holidays and celebrations. We appeal to this intent to go further and revise all references of the term Chamorro in Guam laws to be in alignment with the Guahan Chamorro Orthography, including the names of government of Guam agencies and programs referenced in the code. A list of these agencies is provided in the attached. We have gone through all of the agencies that are listed with the word Chamorro in it, and we have provided a list of them. There are not many. There's five references in the code that we have found that still use the old spelling of Chamorro. Chamorro Land Trust Commission is listed in the code with an RRO. We would, 21 GCA, Chapter 75A, 18 GAR, Chapter 6. And we've provided this to your committees, ma'am. Department of Chamorro Affairs is still listed with the old spelling. That's 5 GCA, Chapter 87. Chamorro Village is listed as the old spelling of Chamorro Village, or Isengsum Chamorro. That's GCA, Section 87103, that we would like to suggest be changed. The Senator Antonio Palomo Guam Museum and Chamorro Educational Facility is... That was named by Executive Order 201603, which names the museum in Hagatnia, the Senator Antonio Tony M. Palomo Guam and Chamorro Educational Facility. But the museum is referenced in law, but not its name. So that could also be corrected. And then 17 GCA, Chapter 8, lists the Chamorro Language and Culture Education Program at GDOE with the old spelling. So we would like to suggest that this law incorporate those changes in the code as well. The code will last way beyond any of us, right? And so it's critical that the code reflect our best hopes and aspirations and visions and decisions as the people of Guam who are living today. So thank you most sincerely for your recognition of this important step in our process to revitalize and uphold the value of our indigenous language, Ifino Chamorro. Sidoos Massey.
Thank you, Dr. Laura. Thank you for your testimony. At this point, I will open the floor to my colleagues for any questions or comments that they might have. Colleagues, please be mindful of the five-minute allocated to you for discussion and questions for the current agenda. Senator Sean Gamatata, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Laura, again, for your testimony. In fact, I was going to ask that. I'm hoping that what you just read off of the tail end of your testimony, if you can provide it back to the committee, because I was going to ask where else in the code? And I think you just shared that today with us. So I'm hoping that, again, as part of this process, we can make those changes. Which leads me to probably my only other question is, what recommendations are you aware of that have been put forward by the compiler of laws with respect to having the legislature assign that office with the responsibility of changing the old spelling of Chamorro to the newer spelling of Chamorro with the capital C, capital H, A-M-O-R-U throughout the Guam Code Annotated, as is done for the term Governor of Guam to Magalahi or Magahagen Guahan and Territory of Guam to Island of Guam wherever applicable?
We don't have a formal relationship or a formal agreement with the compiler of laws, but the compiler of laws is proactive, and she has already reached out to a member of our staff to explore how she can be of help in facilitating such a process. So I think the willingness is there. It's just a matter of it being part of the mandate.
All right, thank you so much. That was my only question, Madam Chair. And again, thank you, Laura, for being here and the whole team of yours to be here.
Thank you, Senator Sean. At this point, I'd like to recognize Senator Telo Tai Tegui.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you again for being here. It's about time, because there's always been that riff, I remember, back in the eighties, I think it was, between RRO, RU. You know, it was still trying to decide. And I think it was at the university level where they actually had a... If I'm not mistaken, they had a, not a round table, but a discussion on the names, you know, whether RRO or, you know, OO. So I'm glad we finally made a decision. And I think it's the right decision, this spelling. So I appreciate going through it, and if we can codify it, even better. So everyone just follows the law, and that's that. That's that. But I am concerned because the legislation that was created references two different titles in one bill. We may have to bifurcate the bill. So in other words, Title V, Chapter 88, as it talks about the name change for the underline, that it is a different title compared to the title that is on Chapter 10, Title 1. Two different titles. So hopefully, we can resolve that. I mean, I'm supporting and I'm hoping that the author of the legislature allows me to be first co-sponsors to this because this is a long time coming, you know? This name change, really, I mean, decades and decades of fighting over the name. So, but also, I want to make sure it does pass and does it rightfully so. And that's why we'll have to look for legal to make sure that there's no... It's germane in a sense, but in a sense, it's two different titles. So I just want to make that clear. Other than that, I have no other suggestions. But greatly, again, appreciate comision's work. And not just the board, but also the staff that you have behind you. You know, I'd like to recognize them for all the hard work. I see you have your executive director there. You know, appreciate all your hard work. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Telo Tai Tegui. Just for the record, Senator Telo moved to request to be a first co-sponsor for both bills, Bill Number 129-38COR and Bill Number 130-38COR. I just wanted to reiterate that or mention that, just for the record. Thank you. Thank you, Senator Telo. At this point, I'd like to recognize Senator Will Parkinson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have much either. I just want to request to be a co-sponsor on both of the legislatures as well. I support both of the legislation. I support your work. Thank you very much.
Also, for the record, I would like to include Senator Will Parkinson as a co-sponsor for the two bills, aforementioned bills. Thank you. I really don't have any question. I wanted to reiterate my full support to Ifino Chamorro and this bill. I know this is a long time coming, and it's truly important and imperative that we push through with these initiatives. And I thank my colleagues, my good colleagues that are here today and for all their support and their intent to be co-sponsors for the bill. At this point, I guess we don't have further questions, only but support, which is beautiful. I'd like to offer my closing remarks as a prime sponsor. Sidoos Massey to each and every one of you who took the time to testify today. Well, Dr. Laura, thank you so much for testifying for both my bills and for everyone that contributed to this important measure. Your voices reflect a deep pride and passion. Our island holds for our culture, language, and identity of our people, not just our people, but really our community in general. Bill Number 130-38 is about more than just correcting spelling or renaming holidays. It's about reclaiming the narrative of our people, our island, our community, and restoring the visibility and respect in our Chamorro heritage that deserves in the laws that govern us. By adopting Chamorro Orthography and expanding recognition through Mes Chamorro, we take one step closer to preserving and honoring the soul, the spirit of our island. I also want to thank everyone, not just here in the public hearing room, but everyone out there watching, the ones that are at large, all the educators, cultural leaders, and young people who join, you know, who, basically, the whole community who joins in this particular effort. We are reminded that language is living and that we speak it, that when we see it written properly in our laws and celebrations, we breathe life into our identity, or at least the identity of our island in general. This bill is a reflection of that commitment. So as we move forward, I remain open to thoughtful suggestions and refinements that strengthen this effort. Let us continue this work together, rooted in respect for our past and focus on shaping a future that honors the truth of who we truly are, who our island is, and who our community is. Thank you again for your presence and advocacy and your love for our island and our people. Sidoos Massey. Thank you all very much for your testimony. My office will continue to receive testimonies within five business days from today's hearing. You may submit your testimony to the Guam Legislature Mailroom or via email at officeofsenatorshellicavill@guamlegislature.gov. Thank you all, and Bill 130-38COR is duly heard. Thank you, everybody. At this point, I'm gonna, we're gonna take a recess.
At this point, I'm gonna, we're gonna take a recess, short recess, couple minutes, just to give way to a presentation here in the public hearing room. Thank you so much. We are now back from recess. Hafadeen, buenas.
Hi. How come you guys didn't sit in the panel during my bills? Anyways, I am. We will now proceed to discuss the last item on our agenda, and that is Bill Number 42-38COR, introduced by Senator William A. Parkinson and Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, an act to amend Section 88102, add a new Section 88109, and to amend Section 88104GNH, all of Chapter 88, Title V, Guam Code annotated, relative to strengthening the fiscal sustainability, establishing the personal policy, and increasing stipends paid to commission members respectively of i komishon Ifinotamoru zan ifinanaguen i historiyan zan ilinala itautautano.
I will now open the floor for my colleague and the prime sponsor of Bill 42-38COR for his opening remark. Senator William A. Parkinson, you are now recognized, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hafadeen, good morning. Bill Number 42-38, I believe, offers a pragmatic and practical pathway to bolster the vital work of the Komishon Ifinotamoru. As we all recognize, the Chamor language is more than just a means of communication. It is the very heart of Chamor culture, carrying with it its histories, its tradition, and the spirit of the indigenous people of Guam. The Komishon's origins trace back to 1964, a time when the increasing influence of the modernization showed the need to actively safeguard the Chamor language. The initial vision was practical: to define language policy, standardize the written form, and create a dictionary, foundational steps for any language striving to thrive. A significant early achievement was the adoption of the standardized orthography in 1983, a framework essential for education and consistent communication. Reestablished in 2016 through the Chamor Heritage Act, the Komishon's mandate has expanded to meet the evolving challenges of language preservation. Their mission is to revitalize and raise consciousness about the Chamor language and to provide instructions on the history and culture of the Chamor orthography, producing essential language resources and guiding policy across our educational and government institutions. The need for this work is undeniable. Like many indigenous languages, Ifinotamoru has faced a decline in fluency due to historical factors. The Komishon actively combats this trend by fostering community-wide engagement and celebration of linguistic heritage. Beyond language, the Komishon plays a crucial role in preserving broader cultural heritage. They co-sponsor events like the Chamor Zineology Symposium, connecting individuals to their ancestry, and fostering a deeper appreciation for our traditions. Their work as the Guam Place Name Commission ensures that the indigenous names of our land, names that hold invaluable cultural, historical, and environmental information, are not forgotten, but are instead honored and perpetuated. The Komishon understands that language revitalization is a community effort. They actively engage with educational institutions, supporting language competitions, and curriculum development. They even reach out to the business sector through initiatives that make the language more visible and more relevant. Bill Number 42-38 offers tangible support for these crucial endeavors. By addressing the operational needs of the Komishon, this bill aims to enhance their capacity to fulfill their multifaceted mandate. This is a pragmatic investment. It is about providing the necessary resources and support to an existing framework and collaborations. By clearly defining roles and responsibilities and ensuring sustainable support, we can empower the Komishon to expand its reach and deepen its impact. It is a practical necessity for the continued vitality of the Chamor language and the preservation of their unique... My time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Will. At this time, I would like to open the floor for testimony and discussion. Individuals who provide testimony before you begin, please make sure to state your name and speak directly into the mic.
Manana Sidus Tatlo. Donklo Nasidus Maasi. Put estina inet nun para ta suporti itsetzu i komishon Ifinotamoru. I am Laura Marie Torres Soudar. Gehilutzu i komishon. And I will speak on behalf of the Komishon, our official testimony on the legislation, and then I'm joined by several members of the Komishon Board, as well as our executive director and one of our Chamor experts and our staff, who will also speak to their support of the measure. The Komishon is in full support of Bill Number 4238, which was introduced in direct response to the Komishon's request to members of the legislature to amend the law to make the Komishon a non-stalk, nonprofit, public corporation. This clearly defined legal status is in alignment with other government of Guam agencies responsible for cultural preservation, such as the Department of Chamor Affairs, the Historic Preservation Trust, the Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Agency, and the Guam Council on the Arts and Humanities Agency, to name a few. The change in status will enable the Komishon to seek and receive funding from sources outside of the local and federal government and provide tax-deductible incentives to donors. It will also allow the Komishon to charge for its publications and services. This will facilitate a self-generating, sustainable source of income that the Komishon can then utilize for projects and programs at no additional expense to the general fund. Further, the bill recognizes that because of its unique mission and mandates contained in the enabling legislation, the Komishon Ifinotamoru zan ifinanaguen i historiyan zan linala itautautano Board is comprised of individuals from the community who are recognized for their path-breaking expertise as Chamor linguists, historians, and traditional cultural knowledge bearers. They are a hands-on working board that is directly involved in the execution of their nation-building vision and fiduciary responsibilities. To this end, the bill rightly acknowledges their contribution through an increase in the meeting stipends from $50 to $100, not to exceed $2 monthly. The bill also enables the Komishon to hire employees and contract services for expertise that may not readily fall within the current positions listed as part of Guam's Civil Service Code, so long as such hires are in alignment with personnel policies and procedures. We are requesting that an additional amendment be included in this bill to designate the Komishon as Guam's Chamor repository or archive for all materials written in the Chamor language and/or about the Chamor language, history, people, and culture. This designation will qualify us to apply for archival and research funding. Your kind consideration, co-sponsorship, and the support of all the members of the 38th Guam Legislature is sought and most profoundly appreciated. Con respetu Sidus Maasi.
Thank you, Dr. Laura. May I, may I ask for the next testimony to be heard? Thank you.
Manana Sidus buenas, hafade. Gomosu Rosa Salis Palomo. Tauta Barigadazu zan guahu i secretaria para i komishon Ifinotamoru Board. I'm Rosa Salis Palomo from Barigada, and I'm the secretary for the Komishon Ifinotamoru Board. I'm going to limit my testimony to the translation issue that we are always being requested to do, not just from government agencies, but also from the community at large. One of the most prevalent things that come to us is in terms of how soon they want it. How soon do they need the translation? And sometimes it was needed yesterday, and we're just now getting it today. And we have begun to establish a protocol so that we have sufficient time. The Komishon members themselves, we do have a Ifinotamoru, a language committee, and that goes to the language committee for us to review and also to work on. We do have vetted translators that the Komishon has gone through and conducted some training and other opportunities so that they are in line with the orthography. There's not a lot of them, and again, many of us who do this kind of work are still working, are still trying to collect a payday every two weeks. Those of us that are not, we are involved in other areas. So with the translation, not so much, I believe that we as a Komishon can address the timing issue with the proper protocol and a protocol that works, but also if we do get the kind of the things that Dr. Laura has mentioned, we may be able to have a full-time translator in the Komishon so that when things are received, and we get requests from just about everywhere and anybody, including from outside of the island, I think that we will be able to be more, not, be more responsive and in a reasonable amount of time. This work also, and that will speak to the issue of the stipend request, we only get payments for meetings, but we do work outside of, at least I'm going to speak on behalf of the Ifinot Committee. We have been meeting every week just to meet the requests that have come in. So with that said, I do support the testimony of our Ge'hilu, of Dr. Soudar, and we never complain, you know? We know how important this is. We want to continue the perpetuation of the language, and we also encourage those that are requesting translation to do the best they can to translate some of the material, if not all of the material, and then send it to us so that we can review it. That in itself is a learning process for many of them, and I think, for me, many of those individuals that submit underestimate their capabilities in Chamorro. They know Chamorro, they can translate. We just need to work on the orthography and maybe on some grammatical structure, or maybe the selection of the correct terminology to use. And with that, thank you, and I support the bill. Thank you very much. In fact, I support all the bills. And since I'm looking up at the legislature's emblem logo, paunu i Chamorro. Chamorro is spelled with C-H-A-M-O-R-R-O. Perhaps we should also address logos and slogans and et cetera within the government agencies. Thank you, Sizouz Maasi.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
My name is Hope Alvarez Cristobal, and I'm the vice chair. I participate in our Finot Committee regularly, and that's one of the things that we do. But I really want to support Dr. Soudar's request here, and that is to get this legal status established for the Komishon so it can broaden our work some more, because right now, the work that we do is provided free of charge. And this work really involves a lot of thought processes, and our staff here, they're always putting out this and that, and, you know, it's a different kind of committee. We exist for the community. We exist for federal agencies, for national, you know, inquiries. Gosh, we exist for a lot more than our local community, and we're always there. We're at the front of a phone call. So every one of our staff knows our phone numbers. They just call us, and we just trot on down there. But all this is free services, and, you know, I think that we deserve to be recognized as a, not just a functional service, but a very valuable community service that no other government agency provides. And so I just want to support our chairperson here, Loling Soudar, who has been very instrumental in the processes that we are engaging in today. And we now have a genealogy, you know, room where people can come and check on their genealogy. I mean, these are three computers, but the expertise is required in order to help our people find their, you know, their sources of information that they're looking for. So I'm in full support, and I'm here to render any other support that you may need. And thank you, Senator Parkinson, for introducing this, but I'm sure that Senator Tina Munia Barnes, Senator Gumatautau, and Senator Taytague, and especially our chairperson here, Shelley Calvo, support you.
Thank you, Ms. Hope. Thank you for your testimony.
Hafaday, guahu si Maria Sanduñez Concepcion, executive director of the Komishon Ifinut Chamorro. I just want to say that I am full support of our chairperson here for our testimony, and I just want to piggyback off of where she writes here that our board is a hands-on working board. We're such a unique agency, and these guys really do work 24/7 for us. And Pia can probably say that whenever we do need clarification, Pietra can vouch that we definitely can phone a Saina. So whenever we do need them, they're just a phone call away. It's not just the Finot Committee. We, like Senora Rosa was just saying earlier, as Sena Hope was speaking, we provide translations also to nonprofit. It's not just the government agencies, the federal, it's nationwide, off-island, in the diaspora, you know? They, we, protocol is they have to message our main Komishon, and if it's as simple as a one word, you know, translation, we're phoning a Saina. So again, they're always willing to work for us, and it's free love and labor that our Saina's have been able to do for us at the Komishon and for the community. So yes, they really do need to be recognized in all the hard work that they do for us in the community. So I am in full support of the testimony that Dr. Soudar has provided for all of us here today. Sizouz Maasi.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to offer testimony? Please proceed.
Hafaday. Wahu si Maria Anatunorio Rivera. I have been out of commission for the past eight years and just came back and got into a project with the Komishon where we're putting the two dictionaries together, topping and the one from Dr. Augen into one and putting it, well, one of my tasks is to make sure that their orthography correct according to what has been passed with the Komishon already. That's a very big, major project, not something that you can do in a couple of months. I'm expecting years. I might have disappeared from the face of the earth before that project really completes. But when I came into that project, I was just very astonished to the amount of work, amount of projects, activities that the Komishon has been doing, and I've just been there like only one year, and we have the recording booth, we have the genealogy set up so people can come in and dig who their ancestors are. Production of materials, curriculum, books for the kids, and not just elementary kids, but higher level reading materials. And the staff, the hours, the work that the staff and the people working in the office are putting their heart and passion into, it's innumerable. You cannot, what do you call it? It's priceless. You can't put a tag on that amount of time and energy. And so I do support this bill. It only increases the amount of responsibility that needs to be done, but with the expertise level that's also in the Komishon, you know what it is? What is it that God said? Something huge is given to somebody, well, these are the guys that are going to do the big, big job to continue the work of Chamorro language and culture instruction, not just at the school level, but at the community level, and especially at the business level. I'm just so glad we've had that half-a-day Buenos greetings at the stores. There's one thing that really needs to happen, it's a venue somewhere on this island where you can go in, and that's all you do, speak Chamorro. There's no place. Now, maybe we can put our work together to say, okay, that particular restaurant, oh, glory be, you go in there, you better speak Chamorro, because that's the venue to get your menu and to get your meal and to talk and converse and practice your Chamorro, and maybe that can be recorded and sent over to San Diego to the sons and daughters, and to Washington, D.C. I was there at one time, they didn't even know that the, what is it? What do you call those cash things? Never mind, that's a different story. I'm extending. But my support is for this bill. I have worked with the teaching of Chamorro since the beginning of time, since I first came out of the University of Guam, and that has been such a huge improvement in terms of loving, living, acting, and doing what we say we support Chamorro. So... As a member of the community, there's just so much to be done in terms of curriculum, of business and all that. So many niches out there that so many people can get involved with and proclaim our island, our language, our culture. And I thank you, Senora Calvo, Senator Calvo. This is really nice. Thank you, Senators, for supporting. Even my linguine friend up there. I remember the time when I, it's a half hour happened, but, you know, it's a joke. I didn't think you'd take that to heart, right?
Thank you, ladies, for all your testimonies.
Senator, if I may, I just wanted to add that Anne is a complete 100% volunteer. She does not get paid. She reports to her, and we decided to give her a desk because she's, every day she's there, and she's been doing this for a year or so. Her services are very valuable, and she's not asking to be employed.
Heartfelt thanks to that. You know, volunteerism is very different to voluntoldism, right? But thank you. Truly appreciate efforts like this, you know? That's the beauty of our island, our community, right? We always put our foot forward to help people, to help entities, and I wish there's more people, you know, that would be volunteering. At this point, I will open the floor for my colleagues, for any questions or comments that they might have. Colleagues, please be mindful of the five minutes allotted to you for discussion and questions for the current agenda item. I'm going to recognize Senator Sean Gumatautau.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all of you for being with us now, this afternoon. I only have a couple of questions, Madam Chair, and let me start with this. Recognizing that the Komishon's staffing pattern, as proposed for fiscal year 2025, identified all positions in the unclassified service, what information is available regarding the need to create these positions under the classified service through service contracts or a combination of the two, based on the Komishon's mandates and its immediate and long-term objectives?
Senator, thank you for that question. We have been in the process. Our goal is to transfer all of our staff positions into the classified service. Many of the positions exist in the civil service listing, and so that will allow for a reasonable transition. The thing is that the process is that everybody has to resign in order to be transferred, so we're going to have to do it in a staged manner. This year, we've been able to stabilize our entire team into the staffing pattern that has been funded by the General Fund. This is the first year, because in the past, we funded many of our staff positions through grants, but the environment for getting money from the federal government has shifted significantly. And so one of the reasons why we are really begging for a change in status or a clarification in our status is to allow us to seek funding where funding exists in the global environment, where funding exists with generous donors from our own community who would give to a nonprofit, but who can't support our efforts because we can't receive funding. We can't receive monetary gifting. We can't charge for our services, as Senor Rosa has pointed out and Senor Hope has, that we get so many requests, and people are willing to pay, but we can't receive, we can't hire a full-time translator and compensate that person through the translation services that we provide. So a change in status would really allow us to do multiple things, and since we've stabilized our staff corps in this fiscal year, we hope to, Maria has already begun the process of trying to see what will work best in terms of transitioning one staff person at a time into the classified service.
All right, thank you so much, Laura. Five GCA Section 88106 authorizes the Komishon to use the Department of Education, University of Guam, Department of Chamorro Affairs, directed by the same section of law, to make available their facilities. The Guam DOE, University of Guam, Department of Chamorro Affairs shall also make available personnel and logistical assistance as the Komishon may require in carrying out its functions. With your annual office rental cost at $194,880, how exactly are these organizations, GDOE, UOG, and DCA assisting the Komishon with your work, and to what extent they made their staff, facilities, equipment, and supplies available to your organization?
They don't. In short, they do not provide us with any financial assistance, personnel assistance, or project funding. We do have collaborative relationships with different entities within those institutions, but when the law was created, because we were not budgeted as a Komishon, I think the intent in that language was to provide the initial support for the Komishon to come into being, because we did not have funding, we did not have staff. And so those institutions that were named as members of the Komishon, we have two members from DOE, we have two members from UOG, and we have the president of the Department of Chamorro Affairs is, you know, by virtue of position, a member of the Komishon. I think that the effort was to identify those institutions as institutions that could help to begin the process of formulating the Komishon and its work. Initially, we were able to meet at the museum, for example, under DCA. Occasionally, we met at the university. This was when we were nomads. We met at the uni, and we really were nomads for years, and so we just had no place to perch. Then we got funding for one staff member so that we could have a secretary to coordinate the filing and materials and those kinds of things. And then as we began to grow and get more support from the legislature, we were able to increase our staff size to the point where we're at now with eight positions. And we do have the facility, and as soon as we were able to get a facility, initially the governor gave us access to Building E at Tizen, and we were able to operate, but it was one room, and then a little closet that we used. I know it sounds a little weird, but we really did use the closet as our recording studio, but we're, you know... But we're, you know, we will do with what we get and what we have. And all of our furniture was donated to us. And we still kind of operate with a lot of love from the community in that way and from the board members and from the staff. But honestly, with our growing needs and our effort to really fully execute our mandate, which is an 11-point mandate in the law, and we take it extremely seriously, we know that we have to grow the footprint. And, you know, Senora Anne mentioned spaces, safe spaces, for speaking given otsamoro. One of the things we hear often is, well, there's no place to practice, or I can't really speak to my nanas at, you know? Every time I speak, it's a latsizo, you know? We need to create these safe spaces where community can go. So expanding our footprint really involves that kind of a vision. And by being a public nonprofit, we're going to be able to have access to resources and partnering that we don't have now as a Commission.
All right, thank you so much, Laura. Thank you, Senator, for also being with us today. And I appreciate the whole panel for your testimony. And thank you again, Madam Chair, for the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Gomitautau. I now recognize Senator Teletaitegui.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and hello. Now we have all the ladies, all the ladies. Okay. Anyways, appreciate wanting to grow, you know, the Commission. It's kind of hard, you know, to support something like this right now, considering the financial constraints that we are in. And that's why I brought up during the public hearing, which we were here, when the Preservation Trust was in front of us, to find a way to collaborate, to find a way to fund other areas that are falling short. And that's why I mentioned to merge. You have a funding source coming from permits that are coming into play and providing them money that this permit should be shared. I mean, this fee should be shared amongst the other agencies and not overlapping. You talked about providing the information to the name change and working with other entities to see this through. So I totally agree with that. But at this time, it's kind of difficult, you know, to look at creating a whole new agency within the government of Guam for the Commission, even though my love for the language and I've done everything I can possibly to encourage keeping our language alive and supporting legislation. I think you guys are all doing a great job currently, right now. We're looking at, well, one of the questions that was asked of me, if the public corporation will be entitled to government benefits required by the government of Guam personnel rules? And it's obvious that you are going that route. You're creating a brand-new agency. I look at the Preservation Trust and wonder if they're all classified. I'm trying to get that information right now on my phone to find out if their employees there are like Joe Canata. Is he a classified employee? Because he's a corporate, a public corporation as well. And a lot of the things that they have, their guidelines and the way they are set up is actually probably more conducive if we were going to go this route as a public corporation versus creating a whole new agency within the government of Guam. Go ahead.
Senator, I don't think that the intent of the law is or the intent of the bill is to create another agency, but rather to clarify our status. Because right now, in the books, we're a commission. And because we're not an agency per se, as you recognized earlier, we're under the Office of the Governor. And creating the status or clarifying the status, the legal status, to a public nonprofit corporation would just put us at par with all of the other agencies of government that are performing cultural functions. So it's changing the status, but not creating another agency per se.
Well, it almost is. If you're starting to incorporate classified positions, you know, into a corporation, that's, it's kind of like GVB. If you look at GVB, the same scenario. They have a steady stream of funding source for them. But it does, in a way, because of all what you're going through, the current law and the Commission, you're changing it completely from what Title 88, Chapter 88 is creating. Anyways, I just wanted to, you know, share my thoughts on that. Because one of the things I'd like to do is find a steady funding source for the Commission. So because not always the, I don't want to see us get in a situation where we have to cut funds from the general fund for every agency and then you're cut. One of the things I particularly liked about the Commission is all the products that you produced while you were there, the books, the... Well, actually, there was an issue with your dictionary. I think you got a grant, if I'm not mistaken. I'm sorry, the executive director. You received a grant from the Humanities Council, correct, to do the dictionary on the book?
No, not dictionary. Actually, it was our cultural dictionary.
Okay, the cultural dictionary.
Not our, actually, orthography.
Oh, yeah. And you were able to get some funding from the Humanities Council for that?
Yes.
Okay. And I think there was an issue with the filing or something, some documents. The last $10,000 wasn't able to get to you because of the lack of information?
One thousand. It was the $1,000.
$1,000? Oh, I thought it was 10. Okay.
Actually, we did get...
The whole grant was $10,000.
Yeah, the whole grant was $10,000. So, but you were able to recover some of it because of lack of information, right? Provided to Humanities Council? That's what I got from the Humanities. Okay. So, you know, I think it's very important to put everything on a website that you oversee, everything from financials, your salaries, your everything. And the Commission, even in the legislation that creates it, doesn't require you to post, you know, the itemization of funding that has. I think that's something that we need to look into. But there was one other question that I lost my train of thought.
Senator, just to clarify in relation to the Humanities Council. Because the Humanities Council is in crisis, the Commission donated the $1,000 back. I mean, we told them that they would not need to give us the $1,000 that they owe us. It wasn't because we didn't submit documentation. We submitted documentation on a regular basis. Senora Rosa was responsible for doing that. It's just that they kept generating additional requirements for documents. And as those were generated, those were submitted. This was for a small grant of $10,000. But it was a valuable grant because we were able to fund our cultural dictionary. We have two volumes now.
Yeah, and it's so disheartening to know that they have to dismantle, you know? Well, they got a little bit of grant now, from what I hear, thank God.
That's right. So they may stay in business.
But they've downsized now because of the lack of funding from the federal side. So hopefully, they're out trying to get some other things. Now, the products that you mentioned earlier, I mean, I mentioned earlier, you know, I really appreciate the nursery rhyme, the books, the videos that you have in play. And I like the fact that it's free, you know? I mean, the Commission is receiving funding from the government of Guam, you know, the general fund, tax-paying money. And making it free for the people of Guam makes it even better for everyone, you know? And encourages them to pick it up and not have to pay for something. And now you're looking at your products and charging, having a charge for them to generate revenue. Is that the intention, too? Because according...
In order for us to create more product, we need funding, right? And if we can't get funding, people are willing to pay. For example, people come to our office and they'll ask us for copies of our products. And they'll say, how much does it cost? Well, we don't charge. Well, can we give you a donation? We can't take it.
I see. Well, how is it then? Okay, so it's just some, oh, it's already timed up. Okay, I'm lost of time. But, yeah, I really would like to work with the oversight chair on trying to find a way to make you whole. But I really think the importance of allowing free products for our community was the whole perspective. It wasn't a corporation or a commission put together to charge people. It was to give that information free.
Senator, we are very generous in our products, and we would love to create products for free. And so long as you fund them, we will make them available.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Apologies, but I'd like to recognize Senator Tina Munya Barnes, co-sponsor of the bill.
Seduzmasi, Madam Chair, for giving me the opportunity to speak and say some comments to the panel members here. First of all, I want to thank the good author of the legislation for giving me an opportunity to be the co-sponsor. Number two is to thank all of you beautiful ladies here for your presentation today and your support of this effort. Number three, I also want to say that in this body that I've been in for more than 10 terms, I want to say that it is indeed, there is indeed a possibility that we can take this Commission and treat it like other public corporations. I bring up GVB. If it wasn't in the 27th or the 29th Guam Legislature that we did, we gave the opportunity for GVB to convert and make their employees have the same benefits like classified employees. We look at KGTF that has both a public and non-private, a private nonprofit organization that works with KGTF. So we have NPO employees and we have government employees. So in that creativity, I want to share for the record, Madam Chair, and I will find the legislation to share with you that I did. And it's either in the 27th or 29th. I know I'm aging myself. But I'm going to send that to you so that we could literally see what we could do to make sure that this measure and measures to support, to support the Commission, that you have it. When we look, Madam Chair, and to the panel members here and to the listening audience, to strengthen, to preserve, to perpetuate, to share, to capture, to protect and continue to teach who we are as native inhabitants of our Chamorol land. Por favor, besangoniao. I will do everything I can in my power as your public servant to give you the resources and the things that you need to preserve and make sure that we don't lose our Chamorol identity. And I am talking to the good chair, who I'm really just humbled and honored of the fact that they would give us time to listen to this bill. Stipends, very minimal for the work that you give. Kata diha hago anti, Mrs. Rivera, the work that you do from your heart to give back to our community, to help in the translation, to help that our young, our men hobin, and people like us who can continue to learn our language that was literally taken from us. As a student, as a child, I was told, better that you speak English than Chamorol so that you can become a better, get a better job or pass in college and not have difficulty. That was a big mistake. I supported the Chamorol immersion program. Hurra is existing. The charter school just approved that that immersion go up from pre-kindre or from three-year-old to fifth grade. And now we're going to sixth grade. From 75% Chamorol to almost 100%. We cannot stop, Madam Chair. And when I see you guys here, both the young and our Sina, I'm saying, un dunkulun seduzmasi, un dunkulun seduzmasi, for not giving up on our island and our community and our Chamoros and those of us who have the Chamorol heart that has not by lineage, but by love for our island, that we should never stop teaching it. So, Madam Chair, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I know I have 22 seconds. I didn't want to get this passionate. But I will ask that if you give me time, that I will have the legislation sent to you so that you can know that it has happened in our government and in this body. Sina masi for giving me the opportunity. And again, thank the author for letting me be his co-sponsor. And I hope that we can get the unanimous support in this body when this bill gets to the floor. Seduzan bini DC hamzu. But todo du ibidamu, pudi talta. Sina masi.
Seduzmasi. Thank you, thank you so much. Senator Tina Munya Barnes, for your heartfelt, heartfelt testimony. And now I'd like to let the prime sponsor for this initiative do his closing remarks. Senator Will Parkinson, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you so much. It's hard to follow that up after Mama Barnes is there. It's like trying to play after Jerry Lewis. But no, I wanted to echo a lot of the sentiments of the retiring speaker. She definitely spoke from the heart there, and I agree with a lot of it. The work that you do, not giving up to endure, is truly something remarkable and is truly inspiring. And I'm happy to support you in whatever form this evolution of the Commission takes. You know, whether you stay as what you are or you become a full-blown agency, I support all of it. I support all of it. And if that's the direction this eventually goes, so be it. Let's make you guys a full agency and give you the proper support you need to make sure that our Chamorol language and our Chamorol culture doesn't disappear. Because ultimately, you know, the thing I've come to learn about government is that where we put our money is where our priorities are. And I would like to see the Commission and the retention and appreciation and celebration of our histories and culture to be something we put significant resources behind. And so with that, I support this legislation. I will continue to support any legislation you need going forward. So please, always feel free to reach out to us. You have an ally in the legislature. Thank you, Madam Chair, for having this hearing and hearing this bill. With that, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Will Parkinson. Thank you so much. Thank you, un dunkulun seduzmasi, to all of you for being here today. And I know we had a long run from this morning, but I truly appreciate your patience in sitting and hearing all the bills that were here. Anyways, thank you all very much again. My office will continue to receive testimony within five business days from today's hearing. You may submit your testimony to the Guam Legislature Mailroom or via email at officeofsenatorshellycalvo@gwamelaboratory.gov. Thank you all, and Bill 4238COR is duly heard. Before I adjourn this hearing, I just want to speak directly to the importance of participating in the legislative process. The public participation in legislative proceedings, particularly through giving testimony on bills, is a vital part of a healthy democracy. When citizens engage in the legislative process, they ensure that laws and policies reflect the true needs and concerns of the community. Your voice helps shape decisions that affect everyday life. By providing testimony, whether in support, opposition, or with recommendations for improvement, individuals contribute valuable insights that lawmakers like us might not otherwise consider. This process strengthens transparency, accountability, and trust between government and the people that we serve. I encourage everyone to stay informed, get involved, and make their voices heard. Your participation is not just a right, it is a responsibility that helps build a better future for all. Together, we can create meaningful and lasting change. Thank you all very much, and seduzmasi. This hearing is now adjourned, and the time is 12:53 P.M.